I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Wade.
Here.
Mr. De Liberto.
Here.
And Mr. Klein.
Here. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 13th, 2018 meeting?
Sir, moved.
Mr. Jackson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. McCucci, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. The motion passes unanimously. This brings us to our first public comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Mr. Reimers.
Please state your name and area of residence.
Brian Reimers, I live in Richland Township. So, I'm coming tonight to ask a couple of questions about what's going on with the kindergarten situation over at Trumbowersville. My daughter is in the PM kindergarten and on Monday, we got notice in the form of a phone call from Mr. Schmucker saying that the kindergarten classes were going to be combined. We are four weeks into the school year and this seems to me to be a disruption to the education process and I'm not really sure I understand why this happened. I did speak with Mr. Schmucker and he was courteous enough to give me a very long conversation and he did answer some of my questions, but I still had others and I was hoping I could get some answers tonight.
Sir, would you?
I would request that we answer that during the superintendent's report and have that discussion so we don't -- the enrollment report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Proceed or do you want me to wait?
Pardon? Just say specifically what your questions are and then...
Well, I have a few, so if you would like me to wait, I would be happy to, but if you want me to do it now, I will. So...
Please provide your question, sir, so then we make sure we incorporate that into our presentation.
I will, as soon as I am done with them, I will share them with you if that's okay.
Thank you.
So, my first question initially is, why now? Why four weeks into the school year? Why not at the beginning of the year? I understand from Mr. Schmucker and from other people that a threshold was reached where two people or two students were moved out of, either out of the school or out of the district, I'm not real clear, and that took the number down to a combined 24, which was then ideal to combine them so that the ratio still stayed at 12 to 1, students to teachers. I understand that. But why now? Why not two days before the school year? Why not a week before the school year? Why do that now when the students were already into their routine and why create this disruption when something that could have been done before?
Okay. Other questions?
I have plenty.
You have plenty?
I do. I want to know who decide, who made the decision? I want to know who was involved in the decision? I want to know why the school board wasn't involved in the decision? I want to know why parents weren't involved in the decision? Mr. Schmucker was pleasant enough, like I said, to give me some time, but he couldn't answer those questions for me and that's something that's concerning me if, one of the things that the school board and the school district is talking about is transparency, that's not being transparent when you don't involve the school board in a decision like this, you don't involve the parents in a decision like this, and we never had the ability to discuss the transition, we never had the ability to consider the options, if there were any, and I find that unacceptable, at least to the point where we didn't know. What considerations were considered for the disruption to families? Not only for the students and the people that were involved in actually taking them to school, for example, but the rest of the family? What about the people who this move just wouldn't work for? What about the people who had to rearrange their work schedule because of this move or rearrange babysitting or whatever other situation might have arisen? What plans were in place as far as accountability to make sure that if someone else moved into the district who was supposed to be in the kindergarten at Trumbowersville? What plan was put in place to make sure that that number that's now 24 people, 24 students in one classroom doesn't go up to 26 or 27 or 28, which now I find unacceptable, completely Also, what about the communication? Mr. Schmucker was pleasant enough to call my wife on Monday and tell her about this, but that was the first anybody that I know had heard about it and I'm curious about why it took so long to communicate it and why the move was so fast. And my last real question is, what about the educational value to the kindergarteners? I understand there is a situation that the first grade needed some extra support, I'm all for that, I support the fact that the first graders need support, but it seems to me that the kindergarteners are the ones being asked to pay the price so that the first graders get the extra support. So, we're taking a kindergarten, two kindergarten classes of 13 and 11, combining them into one class to make 24, so they're losing the ability to communicate with the teacher in a smaller group setting because the first grade now needs extra support. And I want to know answers and I think I deserve at least some sort of an answer, so I'd appreciate if we could address that and, like I said, here are my questions.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. Anyone else like to make any public comment at this time? Okay, then we will move on to the superintendent report.
Ms. Edwards, Safety Committee.
Okay, sorry Diane, I did not see you come in. The Community Safety Committee held its first meeting last Thursday night and we had about 14 of the 18 parents on the committee, or 13, I guess, in attendance and Mrs. Rossino is chairing that committee and so she is here tonight to give you a brief update on how our first meeting went.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just leave it there. So, we did have our first meeting on Thursday. We have a nice sized committee. We have representation, of course, from all of our schools around the district. We have parents on our committee that are from every walk of life, you know, kind of like the corporate hubbub person like me. We also have parents that are just interested in becoming involved. We even have a former police officer and a current SWAT team member who is also a parent. So, the amount of expertise and I think experiences amongst our parents really is making for an excellent group and, of course, we have lots of great resources that we're going to continue to kind of tap into. So, initially in the meeting, it was more of, you know, kind of a welcome, introductions, who we are, what schools we're supporting. My school is actually Trumbowersville, though my son also attends Strayer. We talked a little bit about, you know, what is our purpose? What is the framework that we're going to utilize? What are the norms that as a group we're going to agree to? I liken this group a little bit to what we did with the Facilities Committee. I think really our goal is to assess, what do we have today? What do we need for tomorrow? And, you know, kind of what does that path look like? You know, money, timeline, the whole nine yards. So, I really think that this group will, the look and feel of it, I think, is going to be a little bit like what we were able to do with the Facilities Committee in creating the master plan, so it's very exciting. I'm really passionate about this. My day job is working in human resources, so I deal with very delicate situations and sometimes safety-related kinds of things, so this is something that's very important to me on a personal level as well as, you know, obviously assessing the important safety of all the students in the district, so thank you.
I guess you probably feel very safe in this committee meeting knowing you have an ex or a current SWAT officer and an ex-police officer, right?
Yes, definitely.
How ironic.
Yes, no, I know, yes, so...
How often do you meet?
We're meeting every two weeks for about two hours at a time. We actually have quite a bit of homework. The resources that we need to read to, I think, be able to come to the table with good understanding are pretty substantial. We also need to get caught up on a lot of the, what I'll call mandated kinds of safety-related things that have occurred over the summer and to now, so we need to kind of mesh a little bit of what do we have to do with, what can we do beyond that as well.
Do you have a projected timeline before you feel you can accomplish your mission properly and present a report back to us that's full and complete?
Are you going to hold me to it?
It's not going to be two years.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. I would love to say maybe six months, but it might take nine.
By the end of the school year?
Oh, definitely. And I know, we'd love to be able to just rock through it and have it done by like October, right? Yeah, by Christmas. But I think we'll probably need about six months to really do a good job. The nice thing is that we do have a very large committee. We will have some opportunities, I believe, to possibly break up into subcommittees to be able to get the work done a bit faster as well.
Well, thank you for what you're doing. I'm hoping to be able to drop in on some of your meetings.
Oh, yes, if you can join us, please.
And, you know, I would encourage other board members to do the same if you have any free time, but I'm really curious to see what you guys are doing.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, anything else?
No, if board members don't have any other questions, that would be the report. And I do have the minutes from the first committee meeting that I neglected to send to Mrs. Kazeman earlier today, but I just emailed them to her and so after the meeting, she'll post them in Board Docs so you can read them for yourself.
And then you have a website? You'll have a website?
Yes, there is a page on the website. There also is an email address, safety@qcsd.org, that we'll be publicizing for any parents or other community members that have questions or comments or thoughts about safety-related issues to submit. And the way that we manage that address when we did elementary reassignment is Heidi would take all of the emails that came in, they all get an auto reply to let them know that they'll be reviewed with the committee at the next meeting and then she would print them all into a log, so at every meeting, the members would have a log of all of the emails that were received and could, you know, see what the comments were or make sure any questions got answered, so, okay.
Thank you. The next report's on our Diversity Steering Committee. Dr. Hoffman?
Good evening, everyone. So, we have not yet had a true committee meeting, but we did have an informational session for people who were interested in learning a little bit more about what serving on the Diversity Steering Committee may look like, so that meeting was open to the public. At that time, we decided to work with Pearl Buck, who we've been doing, you're all familiar with that work, and Laura Lomax, and she came out to facilitate the meeting with one of her team members and we had some great conversation, I would say for sure, a diverse group of people, though small, with a lot of different ideas about some things that they would like to see changed in the district. We shared a lot about how the recommendations that come out of this committee would be given to Dr. Harner and then eventually to the board, so there's an understanding that what's discussed in this Steering Committee won't necessarily end up being changed that we offer as a district, but that we're looking for ideas and involvement from the community. Some of the members of the community thought that it might be a good idea to also make it a little bit more known that students could join this committee, community members that don't have parents in the district could join this. So, we are going to have another public meeting on October 22nd here in this room at 6:30. We've asked everybody that came to the meeting to kind of go out and try to find someone from another group to come, so we have some teachers that hopefully will be coming next time. We did have some administrators already there from the building level, community members, as I said, other students, so over the next month, we'll be trying to broaden that net a little bit and see if we can get some more ideas and then really hoping to have Laura Lomax and her team, as they've done in many districts across the county, lead us through how to make improvements, not only within the district, but in the community communication so that individuals who may not have children in the school but want to make a difference in how our community views some of these diversity challenges can also be a part of the conversation.
Dr. Hoffman, how large is the committee right now?
So, people who have committed to come back, I think it was eight, eight or...
Seven.
Seven that have, but we hope that more people will commit to come back also or that other people will come, certainly, and we think that they will. We were notified by a couple of people that that date didn't work or that they were interested in coming, but they had another conflict, so we're hopeful that other people will come. It is important to recognize that with a committee such as this, it's difficult to nominate people or ask people to come. You really have to want to do this work, as most of our committees are, so I think we'll just have to kind of let it have a, be a grassroots effort.
Dr. Hoffman, I really like the idea and thought of you inviting the students. Is there any sort of a diversity committee that exists currently within the student body?
Sure, so two of the main things that we've talked about already, we have had some meetings about Martin Luther King Day and the Day of Service and we talked about that here at a board level last year and then also as an administrative team and that group at the high school level met, Dr. Harner was there, an assistant principal from the high school was there and I think Dr. Finerty was there also, so they had a nice group of students and teachers who are really starting to work on, what does that service day look like? How do we involve as many kids as possible? You know, what's working? And so that small group also will likely become part of this work because they're really committed to making a partnership between both that event and then also what it stands for in terms of making everyone feel included. And then we also have had the group of students who worked really hard after the Cheltenham incident, as it has become known unfortunately, to become kind of like a spirit council. Many of them traveled to Cheltenham. We have a great video that our students made about, you know, inclusivity and those kind of things, so we're hopeful that the leader of that group and those students would also kind of join forces. And then finally, at Strayer, talking to Dr. Bobster and Mrs. Finerty, they also have a smaller parent group, which will remain a site-based group because I think there's value in having groups at schools that want to do that work, but there's a couple of members of that group that are interested. One married couple was from that group, right? The ones who sat next to me.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't want to misquote, but they are, also want to be part of the district-wide conversation. So, I think as we get out to some of these groups that we now know are forming and let them know that there's also this district-wide or community-wide conversation, hopefully we'll kind of join forces on that. But it's still in its very early stages, we don't even have people who have said, yes, I want to be, well, we have a few, but yes, I want to be on this committee and this is how we want to serve, but I wanted to get out in front of putting it out in the public so that for our next meeting, hopefully, we have some more people to start that conversation.
Will Pearl Buck be involved with the meetings moving forward or only on occasion?
So, part of our contract with them is for them to help us with a parent group. One of the things that they found through their work with Welcome Workplace is that once you get out of the school and move into the community, having an outside facilitator is very advantageous for a variety of reasons, but really so that we can learn more about best practices, what have other communities learned that have gone through similar programs. So, we'll be inviting them back at least, you know, monthly for these meetings. I would imagine, and though it will be mostly decided by the committee itself, but I would imagine that if they wanted to have smaller subgroups or community nights or events that we wouldn't need to necessarily bring Pearl Buck to those, well, the people from Pearl Buck, Pearl Buck herself obviously isn't going to come, but I amuse myself sometimes. But I think that in the beginning, while we're getting this started and really trying to think about what should our work be, how much can we reach into the community, you know, what role does the school play, having an outside facilitator there, and certainly it's part of our contract that having them there was very helpful, I felt.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
Next on the report is our enrollment report. Ms. Edwards.
Okay, as we promised last time, let me figure out how to turn this on. Once we got our 10-day enrollment numbers, then we prepared the enrollment report for you. As you may recall, find my notes, sorry, the data that we collect, the source of that data is our building secretaries and principals who do a count based on classroom. From our discussion last year, there was some question about what maximum class sizes ended up being when we had students who were a part of specialized programs that were included for part of the day. So, for the beginning of the year report, you have a document in Board Docs that lays out five or six different sheets that track all of that information. So, there's the basic classroom, regular classroom enrollment, there's the students who are included for only part of the day that are listed by class, there is a sheet that shows the staff full-time equivalent assigned to each classroom and what positions are included in that. Then there's the combined total students per class, which would represent the maximum number of students that could be in a classroom at any given time during the day, and then the staffing ratio for each class. So, all of that detail is in Board Docs as well as the plus class sizes. We base the data, this is the 10-day report, we collect data again on October 1st and on the 1st of every month, but going forward into the year, it would only be our intention to report the regular classroom enrollment because the other information does not change significantly during the school year. Okay, some of the key points from the enrollment. Our overall enrollment is down 69 students with elementary down 87 and that is within four students of the projections that the Elementary Reassignment Committee used, so we were very close, so those projections proved out pretty well. We actually did quite a bit better in terms of the elementary class size average than what we had projected, so when the Elementary Reassignment Committee did its work, we thought we were going to go from an average of 21.4 students per class in elementary to 23.4 and our actual is 22.6. So, the way that students moved in and out of classrooms and so forth, we actually did better on an average basis. Middle-level enrollment is just up slightly and high school enrollment is essentially level compared to what it was this year. Okay, and the next sheet here shows the detail by grade level. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go through it, but this sheet is the same sheet that was reported when we did the projections last year and all I did was add the 2018-19 actual, so you can see how it varied by grade level if you want to review that. Okay, of course, when we're talking about averages, we're not necessarily capturing the differences between different classes across the district, so this slide tries to, well, does capture this. And there's a few highlights that I would note. There are some places where we did have to add sections based on enrollment changes that occurred. We did add a fourth, fifth grade section at Trumbowersville. We added a first grade section at PAF that was pretty close to the school year. We also added a PM kindergarten at Richland after trying several other strategies to not need to do that. So, for example, we contacted some of the Richland kindergarten parents to see if they'd be interested in having their child attend kindergarten at Trum because Trum had really low numbers and we didn't really get any takers for that and there was just too many students to not add a half section, so we did add a kindergarten section at Richland in the afternoon. There's a couple of other things in the chart that recommend or that reflect what we refer to as a bounded autonomy decision and as part of our work last year, we have tried to move more decisions or have more decision-making able to happen at the building level, so certainly while principals consult with us and, you know, talk with us and don't just, you know, go rogue and do whatever they want, we did try to have more decision-making done at that level. And there are two examples of that that I'm going to highlight on the, from the data here, and one of them is the third grade at Nidegg. And Mr. Godshock had talked to me early in the summer and talked to his team and said that his second grade had a lot of learning needs and that he, so one thing he wanted to consider was taking one of his third grade teachers and moving the section to second grade so that the class that was larger and that teachers had identified as having more learning needs would have the additional section. And so they did make that change. So, that is why the third grade numbers are high and the second grade numbers are low, but that did reflect a decision made within the building to best meet the needs of the students in that building, which of course is what we're trying to do. The other place where that occurred would be at Trumbowersville and we heard during public comments, some questions about that. I think I would like to finish going through the enrollment piece and then come back and answer the questions in detail.
Sure.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, for the third graders at Nidegg, when you say that they had more needs for the second grade, can you tell me a little bit about what you mean by, you know, is it just, you know, more IEPs or...
Well, I asked Mr. Godshock to make sure that I had complete clarity on the answer and this is what he said, okay, I'll just, I'll read it to you. He said, "The Nidegg team made this decision to move a teacher from third grade to second grade due to class size in last year's first grade and the academic, social, and emotional needs of that particular grade level. We knew that it would impact the rising third graders and the third grade teaching team. We felt confident the additional section at second grade would have a greater impact on the long-term education of the second graders and felt confident that support with third grade could assist with the larger class sizes." So, he said, "Currently, we do feel the impact of the larger class size in third grade and continue to work through those challenges. We also feel the positive impact of the smaller class sizes in second grade." He said, "Personally, I'm pleased with the decision and confident that it was the right choice and as the year progresses, we'll make the determination about the structure to recommend for next year's classes." So, that was his report to me of, you know, just making sure that my explanation of why they made that decision was completely accurate.
I like that everyone sounded agreeable to the decision, so...
Yes, I know that he did talk with his teachers. I don't, I don't know how happy or not happy people were, but I know that they did definitely consult as a team and try to make a decision that was in the best interest of the building.
So, the third graders, they do have additional support for that many children?
Yes, they have some extra support, especially when the plus classes get split.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that help with that? And I think what, while I'm mentioning the plus classes, that is in there as a separate page in the document and there are some large class sizes in there. There are seven classes of, I forget whether I cut off at 29 or 30, but there were seven of them. Last year, there were six that fell into that category and that is largely a function of not having a cap. So, you know, another strategy would be to say, well, the class is full and we're going to cap it, which means that some students who technically qualify would not have the benefit of the accelerated instruction. So, we have not chosen to do that, so we don't cap the classes, so kind of the numbers fall where they may and the buildings figure out how to best meet the needs of all the students where those splits occur.
I do like the idea that we don't cap, however, I... However, I'm also looking at the flip side, that if you have such a large class size and a plus size, are they getting the quality of instruction? So my question is, are we seeing that those, from last year, those larger class sizes, are they able to still perform relatively well despite the larger class size?
Yes, and I believe that Mr. Lesher last year actually did an analysis of class size versus achievement and did not find any kind of negative relationship from the larger class sizes in relation to the achievement of the students in those classes. We can find that.
For plus.
I'm correct about that, right, Dr. Hoffman?
Since I'm just going to take you off message, but to answer your question, Mitchell. Mr. Schucker, could you come up here and talk about what you did in Trumbowersville last year, the class sizes and the outcome of the 5th grade?
This is last year. I posted last year.
So what specifically, Dr. Harner, are you? Last year's 5th grade.
Remember, last year, 5th grade, what you were doing with real plus Math Plus and the lower class sizes compared to the larger plus class size?
Yeah.
And outcomes?
So, not remembering those numbers exactly right now, but what Dr. Harner's speaking to is last year, we did have large class sizes in the plus class, both for real plus and for Math Plus. And that provided, certainly, we maintained the equality of those programs, supported them when could, and really had great gains with the students in plus class. So I say on that level, you know, it kind of continued as we, as the program was designed and as we expected that it would. What it did for us last year really was also give us two classes that were quite, were a nice comfortable size. I think if I remember the numbers.
Seventeen.
Yeah, I was going to say 18 and 17. The numbers were close. And that, we put a lot of focus in those classes and partnership, the teachers and the 5th grade team, they actually worked very closely as a team, which was fantastic, and made a commitment to the quality literature, not just being in the plus classes, but being through all of the grades. And the teachers worked very closely with our reading specialist, as well as others from the district level, the Office of Teaching and Learning, and really came to a place where they showed great, great gains. 5th grade was a real positive for us last year. Lots in the building, but 5th grade stood out for us. And the kids really, really grew as readers. I'm not going to be able to quote the data right now off the top of my head, but I know we looked at it a couple ways. We looked at it at hard data from state tests, which was successful. We looked at qualitative data just with the kids, and I remember at one point, actually it was for an article that Gary was writing up, we actually asked some kids about their reading and how they felt about their reading, and the answers they gave were
18, 19.
Were really nice to see. I'm trying not to get sentimental, pound to my heart. Were really nice to see because they were talking about themselves as readers, they specifically used ways in which they were, signpost is what they called it, and ways in which they were connecting with a text, and they really grew in their own efficacy and their own academic success on that. And I shared with him multiple times, and then at the end, the NWA scores were, I was really proud of those. We had a significant amount of our students that were in the upper right quadrant, which was the high achieving and high growth. And full credit there goes to the teachers, the staff, the district for their supports, and that was an example where the high numbers, we maintained that, and we were able to provide a real quality opportunity for students with lower class size in the standard classes.
It was brought to my attention by the teachers when I was walking around back in the pod there, and they were all excited, and I was looking at the larger class sizes, asking questions, and I know from the growth, and I followed up and said, "Tell me what's going on, I want to see the N," and then you gave me a NDA report, and the growth in each one of the three classes was huge, and that's why, so I want to pull that out. Plus, we all got an email from a parent about larger class sizes in the real plus, and it does work, and it does really work well. We have a lot of students who need the help in the smaller class sizes and in the real plus, Math Plus, they go on to 6th grade. Like this example, we have eight students right now in 6th grade that are in Algebra I, 9th grade Algebra I. We have probably 120 students in compacted 6th, 7th, and 8th grade math because of that, and that changes their possibility. So you're looking about 30 to 40% of the students going up and being able to take calculus by the time they graduate, which is the number one predictor of college successes, the level of math you take. And if it's calculus, it's about being a college graduate in four years. If you take calculus as your, and you get a B, it's not about AP or anything like that, you get a B in high school, you have a 94% chance of graduation. So if you backward map that down into the 3rd grade where we start Math Plus, and 4th grade for Math Plus and real plus and all the way up, it really changes the opportunities and gives the students what they need, and the teachers were the ones that brought it out to me, saying they loved it, at least in that scenario. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, get it back to you, sorry.
And one more quick question. When teachers have to change from teaching a certain grade, what's the level of impact, I guess, on them having to learn new curriculum sort of on the fly, and they've trained to do a certain grade level and then they sort of have to?
Yes, they do have to learn a new curriculum that's appropriate for the grade level that they're teaching. So.
How much of, I mean, obviously, it's not ideal, but you have to do what you can.
I think it varies, like, it varies by teacher. Some teachers have taught in different grade levels over the years, and so sometimes they're returning to a grade level that they taught before. Or they have a particular interest in a content area, like several of the buildings this year, again, using a kind of bounded autonomy, building level decision model, moved to departmentalization in 4th and/or 5th grade, which means that one teacher is seeing all of the students in math, another teacher is seeing all of the students in reading, and you actually can see that if you look in some of the charts that have the classes listed, like the teachers' names, you'll see like all of the math is the same teacher's name, and all of the reading is the same teacher's name. So sometimes they have a particular content interest, you know, that leads that. And sometimes it's a change, you know, that's not a voluntary change or a desired change, and then they do have to learn a new, the content for a new grade level. Generally speaking, the curriculum is similar, but the specific content is different.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I did want to connect this, those are the notes I just talked about. I did want to connect this report to the enrollment projections going forward, just to sort of plant those seeds now or foreshadow what I think things are going to look like. This year, 1st grade was a little higher than projected, which I think just reflects a return to our historical change between kindergarten and first. Historically, it's been somewhere between 14 and 18%, and last year it was 4%, which was an anomaly. And now this year, we seem to be back to the 14 to 18% range, so that appears to be a blip, not a trend. Secondary enrollment was actually lower than was forecast last year. And then another key piece of information has to do with live births, which drives how many students we enroll five years after they're born. And because we measure the number of births in the municipality, and then the kindergarten enrollment five years later, that methodology also captures the impact of development because we're enrolling about 73% of the students who were born five years earlier. And even if that includes, like, some students moved away and some students moved in, and there might have been new development, but that way of measuring it does capture both pieces. And in our boom years, where we had a higher enrollment, we were having 500 students a year that were born in the six sending municipalities. It then dropped into the 400s. It's kind of floated up and down a little bit, but for 2017, I was a little bit surprised to see the Department of Health information that we're down to 377 live births in the sending municipalities, which is about, you know, 30 students, 30 children less. And I kind of thought that with the economy improving and things like that, that we might start to see a change in that trend, but at least for 2017, that was not the case. So this chart just shows you, there's three lines on there. The one on the top is the births, and then the green line, which is on the bottom, is the number of students that are in kindergarten five years later. And you can see where that little green, where the spike goes up, that's that anomaly where there was only a 4% differential between kindergarten and 1st grade instead of the more traditional 14 to 18%. And then the light blue line is how many students are enrolled in 1st grade six years later. So it tracks pretty well, like, the trend lines follow pretty well with the exception of that one blip. So what does that mean going forward? When you spin this out using the grade progression ratios, which are the historical measure of how many students move from grade level to grade level, it puts us by 23, 24 at around 2,000 elementary students. The middle school will also have started to decline by that time as the smaller classes hit the middle school level. And the high school will still be about the same size because the smaller classes won't have reached the high school level yet. And we would be projected to be under 5,000 students at that point in time. This represents the total enrollment trend.
Can I make one quick comment on one thing?
Yes, certainly.
Just, I want to take a step back real quick to the live births versus enrollments number, just to, a lot of people have been questioning this statistic in conjunction with possible development. Your chart goes all the way back to 2003, and I think it's important to note that the range from about 2003 to about 2007 was still in the middle of the boom of the housing bubble. I mean, they were still building houses as fast as they could in those years. So, I mean, if we want to talk about development, Richland Township was constantly besieged by housing developments during that whole cycle. I mean, I think Steve was on the planning commission back then.
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Anyway, the live birth and the enrollment projections are spot on. So when we say, when Ms. Edwards and the administration say that they're taking development into consideration, I think it's important to note that that's the case. When we're worried about whether or not they're considering development, the live birth trend does mirror future enrollments pretty precisely.
Yes, it has been pretty accurate. And we do monitor developments, by the way. We have charts with, you know, all of the developments that are on the books in the different municipalities, and we update those charts periodically to reflect anything new that's on the books or anything old on the books that all of a sudden has become active. So we do actively monitor that as a component.
And historically, as you look at the numbers, that's not the numbers that are coming into the district, because historically, 8 to 10% of our community goes to private parochial or charter schools. We transport 400 students. We have 5,200-plus. We transport 400 students every day along with our own students, and there's others that are homeschooled and ones we don't know about. So it's roughly 8 to 10% off of that, so now you're down to the low 300s coming in to our grades.
I didn't realize until.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
And if you look at, so I'm looking at the 10-day enrollment. So one of the things that kind of jumped out at me was, if you look at grade 2, so last year was 317 and this year was 375?
Yes, because last year's, it's actually all part of that same blip. We had one year where 50 kindergartners we anticipated didn't show up, and then the next year, we had 50 more kindergartners than we anticipated, and that drove that bubble in 1st grade. Last year, it was in 1st grade, and this year, it's in 2nd grade.
So it'll just continue to follow this trend? Because then I go to the enrollment statistics, and they give you the projections. And so if you look again at the projections, it was 317, then it's 375, then it goes down to 335.
Mm-hmm.
So that next year projection's based off of your 1st grade data, correct? This year? Is that how you do this?
Yes, you calculate the percentage of 1st graders that typically move to 2nd grade, and we have that historical data going on. Actually, it's kind of funny, some of Doug Fraley's data on this goes back to before I was born. So there, I have statistics on some of this that, you know, predate when I was even alive, which is kind of interesting. But looking at historically, the ratio between 1st graders and how many go to 2nd grade, and then you apply that ratio to the current number of 1st graders, and it calculates the expected number of 2nd graders. That's why you see a jump between kindergarten and 1st grade, because typically, historically, we pick up 14 to 18%. And so whatever your kindergarten number is, you apply that 18%, and then that projects your 1st grade. And I adjust all those ratios every year to incorporate the latest year of data. So, does that answer your question, Mr. McCucci?
Yeah, no, I was just kind of bruising the numbers, and I couldn't figure out why the projection was off so much. And more, I was just curious about the enrollment. Like, did all of a sudden 58 2nd graders show up at our, or were they in 1st grade?
Yes, they were here in 1st grade, for the most part. For the most part, they were here in 1st grade.
Is there any, like, confirmation process that you guys do during the summer, like, send out emails as far as saying, "Hey, we have you slated to be enrolled in kindergarten and going to," is that still a plan of yours? Because like, to your point earlier, if you don't know who's going to show up until the 10th day, is there maybe a different procedure we can do the following year to help with that? It might not be 100% participation, but it might be better than a letter?
We can try to verify, but it, I don't know that it's going to make much change in the actual result. Like, I don't know that it's going to drive much of a change in what we actually know before kids show up. There's just a lot of change that happens. For example, when I go back and talk about Trumbowersville, on August 31st, which is the day before, that was a Friday of Labor Day weekend, and then school opened on Tuesday, we had 29 half-day kindergarten students at Trumbowersville. So that obviously was too large to combine, because we wouldn't want to have a kindergarten of 29. Well, by 10 days in, we're actually down now to 23 instead of the 24, and some of those are people that may have dual enrolled. Like, sometimes people enroll with us, but they also enroll in a private kindergarten, and then they kind of wait to make up their mind. Some are move-in and move-out. So it's, we can, I guess, try to better verify, but I'm not sure we're going to get the information back that's going to let us make better decisions sooner, if that's the question.
The reason I brought it up was you were talking about, like, for Richland, you were contacting parents and giving them the option.
Correct.
Richland or Strayer, so if that could be applied.
Correct.
In other situations.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know if I'm reading these numbers, are these what you had projected, and that's what the actual is? So is that, it's like a difference of 15 kids between the two grades?
What you're looking at is three different methods. I do multiple calculations every year using slightly different methodology, which is mostly averaging, like, the grade progression ratios, so that I'm trying to smooth out any blips as opposed to, you know, like, distinguish better between blips and trends, because cohort survival analysis, which is what grade progression ratios reflect, are not good at catching sudden moves. They're very good at predicting trends, and once a trend starts to be established, it's captured really well in the data, but they are not good at catching, like, sudden spikes or those kinds of things. So I try to look at it multiple ways so that I have a better idea where there might be a spike or something coming that isn't what we would have predicted.
Okay, and then to Mr. Jackson's earlier point, with the two new developments coming in, one by Lowe's and one on, was that Trumbowersville Road, those are kind of factored into?
Yes, they are. Yeah.
When you consider development, do you consider, like, St. Luke's Hospital coming in too? It's not a, per se, housing development, but it's a huge hospital being built near my house. Do you consider that too?
Well, not in the short term. Like, in the Well, not in the short term. Like, in the, if you're talking about five, six, seven, 10 years out, that may start to drive an increase in either housing or an increase in students. But in the short term, it wouldn't really be expected to. And even housing developments, when we did the elementary redistricting, which is now four years old, every unit generated on average, I want to say it was .3 students, if I remember correctly. So the impact of a housing development is not as much as one might think. Because when our consultants studied all of the developments and the number of students that enrolled based on them, it was a relatively low number. So like I said, it's like .3 students per house. So 100 homes is only going to generate 30 students, spread among K through 12. So it doesn't necessarily have a very big impact in terms of growth. Does that help? Yeah? See, we looked at that, right? Okay. So this just shows the total enrollment trend, and the previous page has the actual numbers. And I put a trend line on there because the drop in births that I mentioned, down to 377, the drop in births, it looks like could accelerate that downward trend if it continues. So, because the trend line, if you look at the trend line that's drawn on there, if we were just following that downward trajectory, we would expect to have quite a few, you know, an extra 100 students. And the projections don't show that that's how it's going to prove out. So if anything, the newer data suggests that the downward trend in enrollment is accelerating slightly, not that it's reversing. So I'm not seeing any danger signals that we're, you know, we're going to turn back in the other direction within the next five years, anyway.
Ms. Edwards, one of your earliest slides in this presentation talked about the average class size has gone down slightly. And I know we're all a little leery about quoting average class size because there's always those outliers where they're very large. But the average class size has gone down. How many classes, I guess you call them sections, how many sections are there this year compared to last year?
We actually have nine fewer sections this year than we did last year across the whole elementary division.
And still a decrease in average class size? Am I mistaken?
It didn't go up as much as expected. We thought it would go up two students per class, and it went up one student per class on average.
Understood.
But with the closure of Tohicken Valley-
Yeah, how'd you say?
Yeah. With the closure of Tohicken Valley, nine sections were eliminated. So-
But now, when you're judging on averages, you're not taking into consideration the larger class sizes for the plus classes?
Correct.
Right. So there's more kids that are actually not in the equation when we're talking about-
Yeah. It's based on the regular class size, not on the plus class size, which is just a different regrouping of the same students. On the slide, on the third slide, it does show the low and the high in each grade level. But again, that's the regular grade level class. It's not the plus classes, which are in the 10-day enrollment report on the last page. I'm sorry, I tried to give you a lot of detail, so all your questions would be answered and maybe too much-
What do we do for these extremely high numbers in the classroom?
What do, in the plus classes or in?
In general.
Okay.
We have, I mean, we quoted literature and studies that talk about class sizes in kindergarten, first, second, third grade, 15, 20, 25. And they were talking about the way the kids perform over the course of those first four and a half years. In fact, you and I were debating it. And these numbers, like, exceed that tremendously. So, like, this has me, I don't think there's anything to really celebrate with these high class sizes. So-
What grade level are you looking at, Mr. McCucci?
Pick a number between one and four. Could be kindergarten where you have a 26 and a half, 24, 27, 23, 26. They're all markedly above what, unless there's more research out there, suggest.
Right. The study we both debated about went up to second grade, if you recall. At third grade, they decided, we don't need to get too into the weeds of things. Right.
15 was the number.
But I did, it was 15 for kindergarten, I think it was 15 for kindergarten and 20 for the higher grades. I understand exactly what you're saying. But I did a quick summary of first, K through second, there's 48 classes, 48 sections, okay? Out of those 40, and I used 25, I went a little high, there's eight classes out of 48 that are above 25. You know, when you get above that, third through fifth, more than half the classes exceed that number. That's just the numbers. So that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I'm just asking, what are we doing to augment that type of environment? Are we doing anything or is it just kind of good luck?
I don't think we're doing anything specific that we don't normally do for all classrooms, which is allocate aid support where it's available, utilize specialists that push in to coach the teacher, co-teach with the teacher, the same strategies that we would use for any classroom. And I certainly, like, you know, nobody is happy to have a 26 in first grade or in kindergarten. And so I guess that, when I talk about from a good news standpoint, our numbers this year are very close to what our numbers have been historically. So we didn't experience a dramatic increase in class size across the district based on the closure of Tohicken Valley and the decision to combine the classes. So that-
You asked a question, what are we going to do? What's the actionable thing here?
Yeah.
And to me, the actionable thing, as we see the declining enrollment, if you back up on your slide there, Nance, about the declining enrollment, each, the nine sections that we talked about this year, three came from, I believe, three came from less students coming into the pipeline, roughly three. We have 80-some students less, 87 students less.
In elementary schools.
And then if you divide the average number into that, that's the number of classrooms that next year will have that again. And that's going to go up the pipeline. We can use those resources, we can use those human capital resources, financial resources to put back in teachers to reduce class sizes. I mean, that's still our long, my personal long-term strategy for it. So we have no three teachers, we have no three teachers. And by the time you get to the high school, and as I was having a conversation with Andrew today, this afternoon, with a whole bunch of teachers, by the time we get to the high school, we'll be, in eight years, you'll have approximately 400 less students in the high school. 400. Or 350, 375. That and our planning, our dollars, the PFM modeling is talking about the same HR, human capital dollars. So we can do all kinds of creative things to reduce class size and get us where we need to be. That's the actionable thing.
Yeah. And I think for, you know, for the board, whether we're here five years from now, I think, I mean, I think the focus has to stay that class sizes matter. And we need to watch this very diligently and augment when we can't, you know, provide another teacher with something to assist, especially at the vulnerable time, which is kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. I won't have a kid that has to worry about this, but there's going to be people here that will have kids that have to worry about it.
I think when I go back and try to answer some of the questions about the Trumbowersville collapse of the kindergarten sections, it'll speak very nicely to the point that you just made. Another factor that causes the disparity is that we have hard boundary lines for school attendance. And that was part of the original elementary redistricting, where we really wanted the committee's decision, the community's desire was to have neighborhoods attend school together and to not have open areas where children in the same neighborhood might attend different schools. Probably next year for kindergarten, we may move away from that in order to better balance kindergarten class sizes, knowing that the following year there's going to be a major redistricting because nighting will be finished. So that would be one way that at least at the kindergarten level, we can try to minimize the disparity in class size because, as you can see, we have, you know, a 10, that's a full day case, so that's not fair, a 15, and we have a 26. So wouldn't it be nice if they all were 20? You know, so we may use that strategy also next year to try to better balance things so that we don't have the high numbers and the low numbers.
How do other districts do it, just out of curiosity? Or is the boundary thing?
Every district I've been in has done it differently. So there isn't one right way. This district used open areas a lot more than any place else I had worked. And the open areas were bigger, like, pretty much the whole center of the district at one time was an open area. Like, if you looked at the map, it was the, you know, like, this whole big chunk in the middle. You know, so they do it, every community does it different ways. When Dr. Harner first started here and did the town hall meeting at Strayer, what we heard really loud and clear from parents is that they did not like the open areas. And that's how the first redistricting committee was formed. And their decision was, we really want hard boundary lines. If kids go to, live in the same neighborhood, we want them to go to the same school together. And so that's what we've used since that time. Now, if another committee's formed next year to study redistricting for, in preparation for nighting being finished, I don't know what they'll decide, whether they'll decide that more flexibility is appropriate in order to balance class sizes. But at that time, parents said, we understand there's going to be class-sized disparities, and we're prepared to accept class-sized disparities between buildings as long as all the kids in a neighborhood are going to the same school. So that was, so I think it's a very community-specific, you know, what a particular community prefers. Okay, does that help? Okay, almost done here. This just has the projections by level, and the red arrows on there just point out one piece. The blue is elementary, and you can see where the elementary enrollment started to decline. And then you see in the middle school level, a few years later, where you start to see that decline in the middle school population. And if I ran this out five years further, you would see it start at the high school level and start to decline. Okay, so as each class coming in has almost 100 students less than the classes that are leaving at the high school, that's where enrollment overall is going to continue to decline. Okay. And this you can take a look at. This just shows the impact of the sections that are being reduced. And as Dr. Harner pointed out, we expect to, like, theoretically, need fewer sections at different grade levels over the years between now and 2023, 24. It is not our intention to reduce the overall total of teachers. And so they would be able to be used either repurposed for other purposes through attrition or be used to reduce class size where that was necessary. So it just kind of shows the impact from a staffing perspective of going out over that many years. Okay. Are there questions about that before I address the decision at Trumbowersville? No? Okay. All right. As I had mentioned, on August 31st, we were at 29 students in kindergarten at Trumbowersville. So it was not possible to make any other decision prior to the start of the school year other than the one that we made. In the first week or 10 days, we lost a number of students. Some never appeared, some decided to enroll elsewhere. And as we stand today, we are down to 23 students in half-day kindergarten at Trumbowersville. In conversation with Mr. Schmucker, because in first grade, we do have numbers that are above 25. And in brainstorming different ways to approach that, the decision was made that we could collapse the PM section into the AM section. So we'd have a single section, which is now, as it stands today, 23 students. And then that would enable the teacher, because we didn't want to have to move the teacher to another building. Like, if we'd known sooner, maybe the teacher would have gone to Richland to teach the extra section at kindergarten there or something like that. But we didn't know that before the school year started. And so in order to best meet the needs of all of the students, the kindergarten teacher and the PM will support first grade instruction because that's when they have their math and reading block. So in answer to the question of why didn't we do it sooner, we had too many students for it to be feasible sooner. And that was why it happened that way. It was a building-level decision, certainly in consultation with me and with Dr. Harner's permission and all of that. But it was driven by building-level needs and by trying to do what is best for all of the students at Trumbowersville. There certainly was a lot of consideration for family disruption, which is why Mr. Schmucker first reached out by phone to each family individually to talk to them about what the intention was. There's also multiple letters that he sent home once he'd spoken to each family. There was a letter that went home to the kindergarten families, and then a second letter that went to the kindergarten families and to the first grade families, I think just in the last couple of days. Maybe, it might have been today even. Yeah. So yes, that was considered. If we had had a family who just couldn't make the switch to AM for some reason, we do have room in the Richland PM kindergarten. So we were prepared to offer that as an option for a family that might not have been able to switch to AM for some reason. So we did try to, you know, think through that. The question about accountability for move-ins, that kindergarten section is closed. And any new kindergarten enrollments for Trumbowersville, we're going to enroll in the Richland PM section where the class size is 15. So we do have room. We did think through that. We definitely don't want to let new students moving in drive that class size up, you know, above the, at least above the original 24 that it would have been before another student moved today. So like, communication, I feel like Mr. Schmucker communicated as soon as he had information to communicate. I know he spoke with staff on multiple occasions. He talked with us up here. He talked with OTL about materials or things that would be needed from a curriculum standpoint, reached out personally to parents, followed up with written communication. So I recognize that it does represent an inconvenience. But I fully support the decision, and I think it's in the best interest of all of the Trumbowersville primary students to do this. Because while class sizes of 11 or 12 are lovely, they really aren't sustainable nor comparable to the kindergarten class sizes other places in the district. So this was a creative solution that we think is going to best meet the needs of all the students. And Mr. Schmucker is here, and I'm sure he would be happy to speak to the decision if you would like to hear from him.
So, if I may, my summary on this is, we closed a class at Trumbowersville kindergarten class, we merged it to Richland. We did this because we were reassigning that teacher, no, because, we did it because of practicality. But that teacher is actually being reassigned to the first graders, which actually has an average class size of 25 in first grade.
Yes.
Okay.
She didn't move, though.
Yeah, she's in the same building.
Great. But yeah, that's the average class size on here. And that's my point, is there's 25 first graders average in those three classrooms. That kindergarten teacher is- That kindergarten teacher is now going to support those first grade students. So it's not like she has off, he or she has off now or anything like that.
Oh, no, no, no. No, Mrs. Sheets will be teaching the kindergarten class in the morning. One of the advantages for students is it's the same teacher, the same routines. They just will be going to school with her in the morning instead of the afternoon. And then in the afternoon, she'll be supporting first grade. And the first grade teachers and Mrs. Sheets have been working together on exactly what that looks like. At Trumbowersville, the first graders have their math and RILA blocks in the afternoon. So it's like ideal in that way because she'll be able to support core instruction and they're working on their plan for exactly what that, what that should look like.
And also if I recall, it's not required that we offer kindergarten as a district. Is that, do I remember that properly?
That's correct. Kindergarten is, is optional, both for parents and I guess for the school district.
However important.
Not that that makes it any more, you know, I do want to say, and I'm sorry to everybody that this affected out there because it is definitely not the most convenient. And I could imagine being in the situation, based on my personal family's work schedule and how a change like this so late in the game would seriously affect my family. And I could totally understand why people are upset.
It's tough.
So I guess the question is, is there anything that could ever be done to, to not have, to go through this? Because I've never been affected by it, but like you, it would have absolutely thrown a wrench into things. And so is there anything that we can do ever or to, to say that, you know?
Have we ever done it before? I guess.
We've added and collapsed classes late in the summer or up to the first week of school. And that's just in the time that I've been here that I'm aware of. I don't know what might have happened prior to that. So we have done that. We used to not give parents their AM or PM class assignment until late in the summer, which was really upsetting to parents. So we changed that to, to give them that information in June so they'd be able to, to better plan. Because we used to not do that until August. Like at the time they got their bus letter, like at that same time, that's when they found out whether they were assigned to AM or PM.
I can remember because the class sizes were too large, several weeks into the year, we, or at least one or two weeks into the year, we added a, a teacher to Richland. And then the parent, the parents didn't, didn't like that. And the class sizes were too large, but they didn't, they wanted to stay with that particular teacher. And we brought in a, hired a new teacher for that position.
How frequently do teachers get to see how their enrollment fluctuates as the school year goes? Or I should, I'm sorry, the summer, throughout the summer? Is that something to look up daily or?
I share it with principals, I would say about every two weeks. So we monitor, not, monitor it regularly, but I usually send out an updated report and communicate with principals where there's going to be a change. One of our struggles is also late registration. We put something in place a couple of years ago to say, if you don't register for kindergarten by June, whatever, we set the date, you're not guaranteed attendance at your home school. To try to get people who had younger siblings, because a lot, the one year when we were the 50 kids off, about 40 of those were siblings of students that already were enrolled here. So there really was no reason why those students didn't enroll until the last two weeks of August. You know, like it just, so we put that in place to try to encourage people to enroll their students sooner. But Mrs. Hilton, who's our registrar, is usually double booked, probably 10 hours a day for the two weeks before school opens. Like we struggle to get all of the registration appointments in so that students can actually start the school year on time. And we've trained backup registrars so that we can, can book more appointments in the same time slots and so forth. But, you know, we encourage people to enroll sooner, but it, it doesn't often happen. And, and we enrolled a lot of additional students the last two weeks in August that we, we couldn't really project for because we didn't know they were coming.
So I take it there's no state, date that you have to enroll your child by or anything like that?
No. And, and, and we're required, like to get the student in school as quickly as possible. Like when a student moves here, we really can't say, you know, we don't have an appointment for two weeks or, you know, like we have to get them enrolled and get them started because it's our obligation to, to get that child in school.
There's only mandates for telling you when you got to tell people you may or may not increase taxes. Anything else is free for all.
The other thing is kindergarten, kindergarten is not mandatory. And we don't get funded for, for kindergarten either. We only get funded for first grade and above from the state. So it's all on our own and parents are on their own and there's no, no obligation.
Okay.
But once they enter, they cannot withdraw their child. Just as a little footnote, they cannot, then, then it becomes a truancy problem.
That's so stupid. Sorry.
We need to be writing our PA legislatures. I moved here from out of state when my daughter was in kindergarten and was first horrified that it's only half a day and then second horrified that it's not mandatory here. I learned that when we moved here about 12 years ago.
Same for me, I had never heard of a half day.
Never heard of a half day, never heard of non-mandatory kindergarten. That was not the way it was where I moved from.
Any more questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you Ms. Edwards.
Your concern? Okay, what, what questions would you?
But that's because it's true.
Can I, can I suggest maybe a meeting either after this meeting if possible, or if you can schedule a meeting to come in and, and, and meet? And? Okay, thank you. Mr. Schmucker? Certainly.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things that I think are important. And two, two things to start, and it kind of goes to Brian, to what you're saying there. Two things to start, one, I would like to say how appreciative I am of the school community at Trumbowersville and the district in, in working through this process. I say that honestly, the conversations that I've been able to have with, the candid conversations that I've been able to have with community members, I've found very valuable and appreciated the way in which we've worked through that. I also wanted to say the same or similar for the way that teachers and staff members have addressed this and collaborated together on this and worked through this honestly, candidly, and, you know, towards the best interest for, for the kids to the effect that we can. So that I think is two things I just want to make sure that I point out. I also want to point out that as, as a team member at Trumbowersville talked to me after we had a whole staff meeting, and I thought her feedback was really, was really poignant, I want to point out that, that this stinks. And I want to point out, not that, not that making hard decisions is, is what matters or is what stinks, but what stinks is we're in a situation where we have to adjust after the start of the school year. And, and that's never ideal. I don't take that lightly personally as the building principal. And I know that it has been and caused adjustments for staff members having to adjust, logistics of schedules, curriculums, what they expected, what they planned for, all of the adjustments. Kind of emotional adjustments for where people are, you know, rooted and settled. And, and our teachers come into the start of the year after a summer's worth of work and training, you know, set with their building, with their goals for the year and ready to fly. And this, this throws a wrench in that. I also want to recognize that it throws a wrench in family members' schedules. As you said, it would have been a real hardship for you. I know it would have been for me, and I know it is and has been for some of our community members right now. And I also think, and we should always remind ourselves of the kids, because we are talking about 24, five-year-olds, six-year-olds. And I actually talked to a lot of them today. I was at arrival for the PM kindergarten, not after, not on purpose, but just walking through the building. They were there. We talked and one little girl said to me, Mr. Schmucker, when are we going to move to the morning? So I knelt down and talked to her and talked to the kids and it was just a real honest conversation. But I want to remind us all that it stinks because it's a change for them as well. Will everybody embrace it, teachers, community members, kids? Yes, I'm confident of that. That's, I think, my responsibility and my charge to myself to ensure that. But I, I want to note that, kind of, I want to note it, full stop. And then just one other thing, I, I'm happy to talk and to continue to talk with parents and, and staff members as we work through this. I know Brian, if I could, just for what you said, it's a lot of the same responses. I kind of, I get that. Certainly if there's more I can provide, you know, I'll be happy to talk to you more about it and think about it. One place, so two reflections, one, the staff member reflection that I said about it stinks. And one other parent conversation that I had yesterday that really stuck with me, I think was poignant, was she said, the timing is unfortunate. It's after the start of the school year. I get it, but that's unfortunate. What really bothered this individual was I gave her no heads up, like she got caught off guard. And I actually wrote on her email as I was reading it, like, good point. And then when I talked to her on the phone later in the day, I said, good point, like you're right, you're right. As Mrs. Edwards has kind of gone through the timeline, I did not. What I was thinking of this, I was talking to Mrs. Edwards about this early in the year when it was back to school night. I certainly could have said something to the, kind of looking at Mr. McCucci because you were in the audience, could have said something to parents in the audience, I could have said something to first grade families, kindergarten families. I did not, because I was hopeful that I would be able to work something else out and avoid this. Maybe two kids would move in and we'd be back up to, you know, 28 total and we'd be fine. But I didn't. And I think feedback, honestly, you know, I could have done that differently. And I just think that, you know, there's an old saying that I kind of remember is that's when you have a problem, you hang a light on it. And I think, I could have candidly said, I'm not sure about this, I don't want to alarm anybody, but I'm, I'm along with the district watching numbers. And that, that could have been helpful to families. And I didn't do that. And I thought there was really good feedback from the community members and I just wanted to note that to, to all of you and to your point of what could we do, how could we avoid it again? I think that's, that's one thing in my, in my pocket that I'm keeping a hold of.
Or nothing else, just say it's, I mean, tell people it's not settled until, I mean, maybe that's our new norm, is it's unsettled until the 15th of the month or the 25th of the month or the end of the month, I don't know.
Yeah, we get.
You know, I just feel like, I think it's probably the shock and awe of all of a sudden you have your kid, you know, programmed to do one thing and now all of a sudden we're doing something completely different. But it's more, I think the stress is most people have both parents at work and, you know, you have this plan going into it and all of a sudden there's a.
Agreed, Mr. McCucci. And also there is that, there's that beginning of the year data. So there's kind of two points for me as I was working through this. One was the 10, 10-day number count, which Ms. Edwards went through in detail with you. I was, I was watching that and talking to her, probably on day five, I think is when we met in my office and we're talking. And then the other part of it was our reading specialists, our instructional coaches, our teachers, they're giving initial, beginning of the year benchmark data. And I, I wanted to wait to see some of that data. I had a gut sense of what I thought it was, how it was going to play out and how that might inform my decision. But I did not want to, you know, make a knee jerk reaction too soon and have it play out differently. The data ended up coming back and confirmed it. There are the needs that we have and the way in which we allocated, are allocating staff to support those needs. But to, to Mr. Reimer's point, you know, that caused me to wait another week. And that, that was a decision that I, that I went with. I waited and to see the data, but I also know that was another week that families didn't know. And again, they could have just known heads up. At the end, I know it rests with me as the building leader and I accept that. I think my, my charge is to, you know, work with the staff and the community to problem solve, proactively problem solve when, when things come up. And, and I feel like we're going that way, but I don't want to overlook the fact that it's transition after the start of the year and it stinks. And that's just kind of what I wanted to share out for the group.
Thank you for your candid comment.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
You had made a joke earlier about once you enroll in kindergarten and you can't get out. Now we got these 24 kids that enrolled in kindergarten that may have to change to an AM, you know, an AM to a PM. They have an option to disenroll so their kids don't get arrested, right? Like you have some truancy officers showing up at these kids' houses because like, seriously? So we did this. No, no, but we did this though. Brian's kid enrolled in kindergarten. That seems mightily inconvenient.
Well, of course it is.
Well, the other option was also to, and I'm sure that the ideal option either, was to relocate to, to Richland. That was also a op given.
But they changed time slots, is my point.
No, 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 still the PM class at Richland. So it would simply be a different school. And again, that's not ideal either. I get it, but it's, we're not forcing them to enroll in a private school, is what I'm saying.
So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, so. Next, next topic is our music program. And Dr. Hoffman has a presentation and afterwards, afterwards, I'm sure we have a discussion.
Great, so Joe, can you change for me because I don't have a clicker? Thank you. So just to give you a little bit of information about the way that I approached this presentation, the majority of the presentation is really giving some background information that I think may be missing for members that might not have been a part of the board when the curriculum cycle was first developed. So as much as we will talk about music in general.
Why, thank you.
As much as we will talk about music, a little bit later on, I thought that it might be helpful to talk in general about how we plan for programming and funding and staffing in general for all of our programs and classes across the district so that you can see kind of what goes in, into that work and then we can back it down a little bit. So just to give you a little bit of our overview, we're going to talk about some background information, then talk about the curriculum cycle, what that process looks like in years one through three. It is a six-year cycle. Some music specific details and then time for any questions that you have specific to either this or some of the questions that you've had from previous meetings that hopefully I can address for you. So prior to my arrival in this office in 2014, we really didn't have any set systems for curriculum and instruction. There were certainly programs in existence, teachers had, had curriculum in front of them. But there were, there were times in the past, the most recent one I found was a document from 2009, where there was a plan to revisit curriculum. But if you actually go in and look at the maps, it appears that most people in most classes didn't get much past the first unit. So it really never took off in terms of having a full-scale, full-scale plan. I would say that some areas of RILA are an exception to that because it was so tightly aligned with the resource we were using at the time. The book really was the curriculum, so that was pretty, pretty well mapped out. But best practice shows us that your resource shouldn't be the whole driving factor behind your curriculum. We also didn't have any plan for updating things. So you'll talk to a social studies teacher at the high school level who will say that they didn't get new books or curriculum maps in 15 years. And then you'll hear from a middle school RILA teacher who said, I can't keep up with the changes, they keep sending me new books every year. So it was really inconsistent and there was really no plan for how to not only move forward with the curriculum and helping teachers to really get good at what they were teaching, make appropriate adjustments, but then also the resources. So we have an issue, which will come up later, I'm sure, when we're talking about music, that the music teachers, instrumental music teachers, let me be specific about that, are saying that they don't have the appropriate resources for their class, mostly instruments. And it is true that in many cases, their instruments have not been purchased in more than 10 years. So some of them have a usable life of about that long and that's okay. But for some instruments, it's well past their usable life and they haven't been given an opportunity to purchase new ones. So enter the curriculum cycle, which I obviously am a fan of, but I don't think it solves all problems, so let me be clear about that. But our plan with it was to make sure that we at least touched every class every six years. So it doesn't mean that every six years, we need to buy new resources. And it doesn't mean that every six years, we need to update all of the curriculum, but at least ensures that we are talking about that class every six years. It allows for greater teacher participation in curriculum design. So we actually offer the opportunity for any teacher who wants to be a part of it to come together on our non-instructional days and, and have a say in our resource selection, have a say in what gets actually put into our curriculum maps. It aimed and has proven to provide It aimed and has proven to provide fiscal stability to the budget for my office. So, there were years where the budget was, you know, well in excess of $1 million, 1.5, 1.6, and then there were years where it was $600,000. It was very difficult for the district to plan for what that looked like. So, we took a lot of care in selecting the way in which we put topics into the curriculum cycle so that we could balance, you know, assuming that an elementary re-la purchase is going to be a large purchase, we wouldn't want to do that in the same year that we do a secondary math purchase, which is also a large purchase. So, that kind of a thing. And then also, we worked to tie our professional development time, at least half of it, to the needs of the teachers who were working with the new curriculum. So, they actually have time to meet together as a group, adjust what they're working on, you know, plan for common assessments and things like that. So, this is a picture of the curriculum cycle, a little bit difficult to see from there, but it is for six years. And unfortunately, there were some growing pains with the cycle, in so much as that not everybody could be in year one in 2016 when we started. So, we had to kind of try to prioritize who needed materials right away, which programs were we already working on? So, for instance, we were already, prior to my coming into this position, the elementary math committee had already met, and they were already moving forward with that process. So, putting them in the implementation year made sense because they had all new materials. So, what that meant for some of the groups that are towards the end there, you see, is that they've had to wait even longer than they were already waiting for new materials. So, to the best of my ability, I have tried to budget for things that those groups are asking for as kind of holdovers. You know, we don't maybe need all new books, but maybe there's this one class, thinking of personal finance, I think, was an example, where the business department as a whole was doing okay, but I brought to you this year a request out of the, like, out of the cycle, it wasn't where it was supposed to be, to purchase new books because I felt that they really couldn't wait until we were, you know, we were 14 years from the copyright date. It was, it needed to be updated. A lot of the information didn't account for teaching them about some of the economic things that had happened in the last 14 years and those kind of things. Another thing that I did a budget for this year, after hearing from, actually, some community members, not actually from the teachers themselves, but we had a lot of conversation last year about music and the instruments. And so, again, out of the curriculum cycle, I did budget some money to purchase some instruments for them this year to try to hold over what they needed. I did get that information from the music department just last week, and so you'll see later on, I have a request for bids on the agenda in terms of looking to see which of those, doesn't mean we're going to be able to purchase all those instruments because their request of their immediate needs is 80, around $80,000. Their long-term needs over the next three years is in excess of $200,000. And so, there's certainly a lot of departments in the district that I have oversight of who would be happy to have $200,000. So, I have to really, you know, figure out what the needs are versus how we can move forward.
Quick question about that?
Yep.
Wouldn't we do it on a cycle? Wouldn't that make sense?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do. And so, that, they are in year one of their cycle, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment. But part of the struggle with that is, I feel that I am confident that I have a clear plan that works. So, since we've started this process, my office has written 96 new courses or revisions of courses, so 96 classes total. Since 2015, yeah.
15 and 14?
Well, 14, end of 14, to be applied to 15. So, now, that's not, like, I wrote all those. I did write a lot of them, but we have a huge team of teachers that come into each of these, now that we've started the curriculum cycle, that are doing that work as groups. So, as a district, 96, and I think we have, last count, about 29 more to go upcoming this year and next. So, staying within the curriculum cycle is certainly valuable. What I had intended to do in any of the groups that I moved out of the cycle was really to support teachers. So, if I was really hearing from teachers that there's this need and they don't feel like they can wait the three years, I've met with them, I've talked to them, I've been in their classroom, I've tried to see what I can do to mitigate that and to help them catch up to where they are in the cycle. So, I think, Ms. Mitchell, you're correct. Ideally, as you see in year one, which is where music is right now, we would be trying to decide, what do we have now that works? What do we need? What are we missing? And I want to remind everyone that our obligation for the K-12 music program is general music. We have no obligation to offer instrumental music, vocal music, orchestral music. We do that because we believe in its value.
Does any other school district around us not offer?
They do, yeah. We have two in the county that don't offer any music besides, Laura Part of the County, yep.
Like, the Shemini?
Morrisville and Bristol Township. I think Bristol Borough and Morrisville, I believe. Or they offer them through outside providers. Now, they are much smaller than us, and I'm not trying to compare, I'm not trying to compare those districts to us. I'm simply just saying that through the state, the standards can be met through general music. And that is a, in my current role in dealing with the curriculum, I feel as though my largest obligation is to all students who have a musical experience. So, making sure that when we're talking about funding for the music department, that we've not entered in a public conversation about how important it is that we have the right materials in front of our first graders in music, or that we have the right materials in front of our fifth graders in music. And there's been parents who have called a number of times and said, "I really think the district should be buying the recorders in third grade for every kid." And so, those are things that we're talking about now, now that we've entered the cycle, and what is our responsibility to ensure that all students who access music in this district have a high-quality, you know, time with that? And part of that is making sure that our band program and our choral music program remain strong, certainly. But it isn't, I think it's important to know that when I'm looking at a plan and I'm looking at how I can best serve the needs of all kids, it can't only be the students that are in instrumental music. So, that's pretty self-explanatory. But some of the concerns from the music department themselves, and then from outside concerns and from us, I kind of listed on here and have talked about some of them. Disparity in resources among buildings appears to be one of the largest concerns. So, some elementary buildings may have had PTOs that purchased boomwhackers, they're called, they're actually pretty neat if you haven't seen them. But you can, they're very colorful, large, they look like tubes, and they each play a different note, and students can originally learn rhythm and notes through color. So, if they see the yellow come up, they know to hit their yellow, and then eventually they might learn that that yellow is an E. So, it kind of, you know, shows in that progression. And some buildings, you know, really need new ones. And some buildings might have, you know, I was looking at TV when we were moving, and a lot of that music equipment was not salvageable. It was, you know, broken xylophones or tambourines that had a hole through the middle. Like, just over time, that happens. It's not neglect, it just, you probably see it in your own home with things that over time are out of their usable life. We've also had questions about the class sizes for sectionals. So, there are a number of districts in county, and I did survey them, that don't offer sectionals at all. They have their music teachers teach all day long at the secondary level. And then there are some who do what we do, which is a blend of teaching a class and also having time for sectionals. But we appear to be, and this is not any great statistical, I'd have to do more research, but from what I know at this point, we appear to be on the low end of number of students per sectional group. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Edwards, but I think it's close to three students per group. So, at any time, the instrumental music teacher has three students in front of them. And some of that is due to, you know, different instruments. You might not think it's appropriate to have an oboe and a tuba come in at the same time and play together. But at sometimes, they are running multiple groups. Maybe they have a trombone one, two students, and then later in the day, they have two more students for trombone one. And so, there is some room in there that the teacher has the, you know, has the opportunity to fill their schedule how they see fit. And so, there's some question about if we need to look at that when we go through this program. And then another obvious piece was back to adding stringed instruments as part of instrumental music. And then, lastly, another thing that we're looking at as a district is the lack of diversity in our music program. So, that's not just skin color diversity, but socioeconomic status. Do we make it affordable for students to play instruments in this district? Do we have a representative population of our district population participating in music? And we currently do not. So, that's another thing that we're looking at.
Can I get one clarification?
Sure.
If I may?
Absolutely. Well, I'll say absolutely, assuming I can clarify.
I think a part where I'm a bit confused, when I read through the board policies, when I looked at policy 105, it talks about curriculum development. And the part, I think, that we were told last board meeting was that, you know, this is just an extension of our current program, and so it doesn't require board approval. But the reading of the policies, in my opinion, states otherwise. And the reason I feel like it's a good practice as well is because I feel like there's long-term financial implications. A plan like, you know, a program like this does need some adequate amount of planning, and if it's set up and it's going to come to us at some point to be approved for the curriculum, for the budget, I guess I don't understand how this would not qualify as something that would be brought to the board first. I don't know if you have any comments on that?
Sure. So, from our perspective, and from the perspective, as I understand it, from PDE, the actual program that requires approval is K-12 music. So, we already have a K-12 music program. And if we think back to when we were originally looking at whether or not we should look to close Milford or TV on some of those early presentations that Mr. Schuck and I spent a good amount of time walking through, we actually talked about what the implication would be, and at that time, music was one of the selections of things that we could cut. So, we had thought about it from at least that point as one program. I think that if you talk to any number of people, and we have gotten positive comments from families that are excited for their child to have the opportunity to play a stringed instrument as well, I don't take lightly that, I guess, the idea that I wouldn't understand the implications of adding something additional to our current offerings. I think that in planning, in planning for this, certainly, the idea of how much staff we would need, how much money it would cost us, where we'd store the instruments, where would students play, has all been part of our thinking. And I guess typically, that's not ever been something for any program that we've ever shared in a public setting. You know, it, we have to look at that when we say, "We're going to start, you know, or we're going to change the way that we do departmentalization." And we had some teachers who want to start teaching math or wanting to start, that's something different. It did cost us a little bit more money because we had to buy different materials for different classes, but that all comes out of, my job is making sure that I can pay for that without asking for more staff or without asking for more money that's outside of what I'm typically allocated consistently over the last five years. So, while I certainly understand that there has been a lot of discussion around how we might want to better talk about these things in the future, in the past, what has come to the board and what will come to the board level or the education committee is the final document of what those unit plans are, which, at this point, we actually don't really have updated ones for any of, anything in the music department, hence the curriculum cycle. So, that would all come in together. We would want to make sure that if we are looking at the need eventually to potentially hire another teacher, that we would do that through some of what Ms. Edwards reported in terms of, you know, let's, if we're going to need three less teachers in kindergarten, then through attrition and through movement of different people, one of those positions becomes a music teacher. It doesn't add to the budget, it's not a new position that we're asking for, it doesn't change the membership of the union, which is really important because the other way is we need three less classrooms, we have three less teachers. And so, repurposing them to either lower class sizes, as Dr. Hunter talked about, or move them into different areas, it's similar to what we did when we included Spanish and coding. We brought to the board the actual curriculum documents for doing those things, but because we were able to move staff around and did that through our financial plan, we didn't come and say, "Hey, this is, you know, something you were going to do." So, I think some of that conversation we've had in the last couple of weeks about the way that things were done previously with some other members of the board, and that if this board would like things to be done in a different manner, it certainly, that would be helpful to know, but it was certainly never any of our intentions to try to do something and that wasn't.
To clarify what you just said and to build off of your question, you mentioned crafting '97, I think was the number you used, curriculums, '96? Excuse me. Curriculums in your time here, in your time in this role. And I remember several times, we get a curriculum in front of us, list it out, spell that, "This is what we're going to do." So, you've already crafted the curriculum. Somebody in the administration decided that we needed this class, a class, whatever the class was. They didn't come to the board and ask us if we wanted such a class. Ms. Hoffman crafted it. And then it was brought before the board and said, "Here's a curriculum, do you approve or don't you approve?" And the only reason I bring this up is because strings is, in my way of thinking, is the same thing. She's, they've decided they needed a strings program, they didn't ask us, they didn't ask us with any of the other 96 curriculums she's built over this time. And then...
Is that, so is that right? Because, I mean, the policies state otherwise, is what I'm saying. And I am new at this, so bear with me, I appreciate everyone's patience as I'm trying to understand, but the policies, our own policies, don't state that. And so, and even as a best practice, I guess, I don't, I guess I don't feel comfortable with voting on something that is already about to start. For instance, what I would feel most comfortable with was if this type of proposal would be presented to, I guess, the board before we were to start and start advertising, something like that. What would make me feel comfortable, I don't know about the rest of you, is just to understand a lot of these details that we're now getting, so we can understand the long-term implications. To me, if you're starting a program already and it comes to me to approve it from a budget and curriculum standpoint, it kind of just feels like a rubber stamp, and I don't, I feel pressured to approve that, right? So, what I'm just stating is, I feel more comfortable if I had a little bit more foresight for something like that.
Some reflection from my experience here in working with the board. We didn't bring to the board the coding program, the Spanish program for approval. We had the teachers available, FTEs available. We brought to the board teachers to approve because we needed to hire teachers, and then some of them were repurposed from other grade levels, and those courses began in elementary school.
Well, then, maybe we need to redo our policies.
But we also, we also need to redo my job description, that's part of it, because my job description allows me to do this.
I agree. But I have a question.
Well, wait a minute. You know, I want to go back to this because we're losing track of what our job is as a board. We are, we are in charge of the finances of this community, and I disagree that you can just haphazardly start spending millions of dollars without vetting that through the board. So, while you may say on one hand, "Yeah, hiring somebody," look, I'm not going to the interview, I'm not interviewing the teacher. I'm not saying, "This is the person you need to hire." That's your job, your responsibility.
Yes, sir.
However, I do take fact that you're saying that your job affords you the opportunity to spend as much money as you want.
No, I didn't say that.
But that's essentially what you said.
No, I didn't say that. So, don't...
I would agree, that's not what I said.
You start a program that you're pretty forced to...
What if the program's $3 million? What if it's $4 million?
Well, there's a music...
$500,000.
What we've approved as a board is a budget, and in that budget is an allotment for the music department, the teachers, the staff, the supplies. My point is, if they can do it in that budget, what do we have to say about it?
Well, here's what we have to say about it, because the last time we had this discussion was on spending $600,000 for a new reading program, right? That we may or may not need it. We talked about cutting that, right? At our last retreat, we had that huge discussion about, do we spend the money when we were under financial restraints, constraints? So, I think it is a legit question that we have to have this discussion and open dialogue without feeling like we're stepping on anybody's toes. It's not the intention of me by any means.
I don't feel...
But I do feel that every time we ask a question, or that when we're asking a question, it's like, "Why, you're down in the weeds." Well, wait a minute. We're down in the weeds because that's where we need to be financially. Because understanding the long-term ramifications of starting a project, and I don't care whether it's music today or math tomorrow.
Right.
You know, we approve that. You know, we approve that. So we have to have a good understanding of the money that we're about to spend. Because we can't just keep on a track of spending and spending and spending, right?
And it's kind of like with, you know, the, for instance, the new RILA curriculum, you know, that whole process, I get it, was already, it's sort of in place, but it, you know, it was already planned to be purchased to start going. And then it comes to me to vote, how can I say no? I mean, I don't know. That's kind of how I feel. I just want to get a little bit more information upfront. And I'm, I agree with Keith. I think, you know, the purpose of us being here is to try and, and I think you guys are doing that as well, just try to make responsible choices, not for things to get to me that are already planned, already advertised, and I have no choice but to say no. That just makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable.
Okay. If I can address just a piece of that, and I just want to clarify two things. So with, specific to the elementary RILA, which was about a three hundred thousand dollar purchase that was in question at the time, that was brought to the education committee and the board, but during year one of that cycle. So that was brought to the board, the planned course statements were approved. So in the terms of what's written in our policy, the board does and will approve those statements, those planned course statements and those course descriptions once they're written. That will always happen. There's, that's the way that the policy is written. It doesn't necessarily, and I think some of that's a distinction between what's a program, what's a class, what's, you know, what's considered a new course, what's considered a revision of a course. But that will always come to you, as will the budget. But in the case of the elementary RILA, the planned course statements were already approved, and the textbook was already approved to be selected. So when it came up last year, should we, or should we not spend the money, those two previous votes had already happened. So the intention is that you would, it would come to you, that you would see the curriculum for all of the elementary and middle and high school classes. So that's going to be our general music classes, our instrumental pullout classes, if we decide that strings is separate from that, or if they're going to be in with the same instrumental music, they would still get a different planned course statement. All of our vocal music classes, our AP music theory at the high school, pop rock and jazz, all of those classes will come to you. If they were hearing that they might want to add some new classes, keyboarding, some different maybe vocal technique classes, they would all come as a new thing. But I guess the clarification is, so the music teachers decide, let's say, that they want to have, and I don't want to misquote Jonathan's class or the middle school class, but a class that basically is keyboarding. So learning how to play the piano, but not in so much as actually formally playing the piano, but accompanying kind of things. In the past, I would not have come to the board to ask about adding that class prior to having it already basically, not the whole class written, but a planned course statement. But planned course statement says, what's our rationale? Why do we want to add this class? You know, what is it? But at that point, it's already been sort of done because I can do it with the staff that I have, with the money that I have. So I think that's where we might need some clarification if that's not still the case.
And that actually partially goes in with what I was going to ask. You know, it was given to me as an example by another parent that when we wanted to introduce an Italian course, I came in front of the board and asked our opinion and all these things, what makes functionally what we're discussing right now different than that? I mean, we already have a foreign language, you know, curriculum, right? We're just adding an Italian. What functionally makes that decision different than what we're going through right here?
So in terms of French, I think is what you're talking about? The main, the main part of that was that.
Foreign language.
Yeah. We had, we had, that came from, that wasn't a request that the district brought to the board. So it was parents that brought that to the board and an individual from the community that brought that to the board. And then we agreed based on the board's direction to look into it. So that came to the board, not by my office, I guess is why I would see that as different. But can I try to finish a little bit of this?
Yes.
Okay. So my guiding questions are how do we have a high-quality K-12 music experience for all kids, any kid that goes into music? How can we ensure that students have choice in their music education? So you may have a child in third grade that does not want to go to music, and unfortunately, we can, they're going to go, so we have to make the best of that situation for them. But we also have students who want to choose choir, and they can't because they have an AP class at that time, or because they go to the technical school. And so how can we make sure that we are not a roadblock to students being allowed to choose to be a part of the music education here? What does, or how does the music experience in QCSD impact college and career readiness? We've heard Dr. Hunter speak a lot about participating in arts and in athletics and what that can do for students, so thinking about that. And then how can we ensure that every student here has the materials that they need? And whether that's an instrument in front of them, a method book, a theory book, whatever it is, how can we make sure that we have that provided to them? So year one, right now, music, we're trying to get a little music specific here, though this really applies to everyone. The music department right now has the opportunity to select the resources that they think will align with our K-12 vision. On September nineteenth, they had three hours to work together, which we'll talk about in a minute, where they started developing their K-12 vision together, really trying to do some work around what this music department should look like, K-12. They have the opportunity to purchase materials. Now, obviously, that comes to the board. I have a board approval for that eventual curriculum and resource purchase as well. And we don't necessarily buy everything that any group of teachers tells us. So if you ask the middle or high school RILA teachers, they will say that they really wanted a software program that we didn't buy. We felt it was a little too redundant, it was a little bit too much money to spend on the number of students that would benefit from it, so we had to say no. And that's a hard decision. But to be able to do, to do my job, as I believe it has been, you know, entrusted to me with the money aspect of things, is to make sure that if I'm saying yes to someone, I'm usually saying no to somebody else. And so I really have to balance, if I'm going to spend eighty thousand dollars this year on music instruments, that's eighty thousand dollars I didn't spend on something else. And so it never is intended to, and we have the example of, you know, instruments being brought in that aren't in great condition, and I know that. I'm aware of that. It's, the question is, is it the district's obligation to replace them when we may not have the money to do so? And last year, the answer was no. I didn't feel like I had the money to spend on that. And I chose and still stand behind choosing, putting high-quality reading texts in front of our elementary school students. And I will continue to stand behind that because that's, you know, two thousand students just this year, multiplied by the six years at least, will have those resources, who can read those texts.
On the bottom of that slide, right there in the middle, it says, board approves curriculum and resource purchases.
Right.
Okay. So what we will approve for the music department curriculum, will that actually include a list of every teacher's class and what every class is teaching?
No.
Okay, that's not, that's not what.
It never does.
That's not what a curriculum is?
That's correct.
Okay.
And right now, though I'm slowly trying to change this, prior to my arrival here, there were no planned course statements or any board-approved documents for anything under sixth grade. That's just a fact. So I don't believe in that. And as we've been doing these new programs, and elementary teachers have, can attest to the amount of work that they have done to make sure that they have that for every grade level. We now have it for all core subjects, because we've just finished the four core subjects being revised. And so we are working on making sure that we have the appropriate documents in place, but they just don't exist prior to 2015. But what you would get is a planned course statement, which says a description of the class, what grade level it's going to be offered to, maybe a little bit about units, what units we're going to cover, but it's usually very general, sort of like the topics. So if I'm thinking about what exists now in instrumental music, one of the units might be tone. And when you open it, it basically just says, can the kids get, you know, identify the right tone, and can they get the right tone out of their instrument?
When you, when you present a curriculum in this manner, what type of financials accompany it?
So when we go to share the resource purchased with you, I always have a quote from, you know, if it's a textbook, I'll always say this is, and this goes to the education committee, clearly stated, which also was not previously the case. Things were purchased out of order before, as Mr. Anderson can attest to, that was one of the first things that he asked me to fix when I came to the education committee, was that he was approving resources without knowing how much they would cost. So that's never the case. We always have the exact costs down to shipping and delivery included in there to be approved. So that happens when we're ready to do it, though. So like, if you're thinking about strings, for instance, you would approve the planned course statement for strings at the October board meeting so that it could start in November. That's the way that it has worked in the past. I would love for it to have been in June, and we try to get back on that cycle, but some, you know, some things don't quite work out that way. The teacher is, that we hired is being held by her previous district, as they are able to do. So we are looking to negotiate that start date with her and hope that it will be very soon, but they can technically hold her sixty days. She is working with me on the curriculum. She's been in. She came in and met with her music teachers on her own time. She spent three hours on that day, taking her time to come in and meet with the teachers and start to get engaged in the department. And then we would come and share with you the costs. But due to a generous community partnership, we have no costs in year one. So there's, all the instruments will be delivered to every elementary school building for the entire year free. And so, and I did share another document with the board, which, again, was not necessarily intended to be public, because a lot of this planning is work that we do internally, but I had been asked for it, so that's attached on board docs as well, that does show that we are talking about purchasing instruments for instrumental music, because it does, the break-even point is relatively even for rentals, so we might as well own them so that we can make sure. I did include maintenance costs. I did include instruments to be held at the school, because students can't take an upright base on the bus home with them. I did include a generous amount of items that we would own as a district to be able to share as scholarship instruments for students who couldn't afford them, working towards our diversity. I did include maintenance costs and staffing. All of that information is in my plan. And at the end of six years, so at the end of 2024, we will have invested in total, according to this modeling, which is honestly a little on the high end, sixty-three thousand dollars total. So it's not, it's not millions of dollars. It's not at the detriment of not being able to purchase other instruments. And I guess from our perspective, it's well within what we have previously been comfortable covering within our budget.
Is this money already, I mean, do you have money specifically budgeted for the music department that this covers?
Yes. And it does, and according to my modeling, it does not negatively detract from the money that I have set aside to cover K-12 music as a whole. So K-12 music is in a cycle year with six to twelve, I should have it memorized, six to twelve science, maybe K-12 art?
Art.
Okay. So those groups together, and health and P, those groups together should not exceed what we purchased in previous years for the other groupings of, you know. They're all combined together next year for a purchase. So being able to purchase, maybe not all the instruments that the music department's asking me for, but the ones that I deem appropriate, I feel like I can cover those with this cost, with the, with the whole K-12 program. And that does account for, as I put in here, I think, and I'll just skip ahead, which I'm sure nobody minds, if I skip ahead to some of the things here, which are anticipated costs, things that I'm thinking about that I know. I know we need to update our music libraries for, in our classrooms, in terms of what music we're having children play, so that it's a little more contemporary and can grab students in. I know we need classroom materials. Storage for instruments is not great in all buildings. And that's not just because of adding orchestra instruments, it's because we have poor storage facilities in some of our buildings. So if you, if you are okay with me purchasing storage for a trombone, I would also say that I can purchase storage for a violin. Like, it's all one kind of thing in my mind. I know that I need to take care of K-12 music, and that's what I'm aiming to do. New lesson books and theory books, some of that's paid for by students, but some of it's paid for by the district. We have elementary teachers who are asking for music software, so that, if you ever heard of Smart Music, so that students can play into the computer, hear themselves. That's something that right now, parents pay for, that we may look at offering as a district. So we have all of these, all of these things happening. But if you look at my projections for staffing, we really should not need to add an additional music teacher until 2023. At which point.
So is that from repurposing?
No. It's from using existing staff. So if our current new hire were to teach only instrumental music, stringed instruments right now, she would be in every building one day a week. She could really be in every building half a day a week for the first couple of years.
But what happens at year three?
So at year three, we have her in every elementary building, the sixth grade building, and the seven, eight building. So she's teaching in multiple buildings, and she's well aware of this. We've had this conversation about the number of students. If we should be so lucky that we have hundreds of students who want to take a part of this, then yes, just like anything else, we'd have to revisit. Just like if we all of a sudden had, you know, a hundred students who came to us and wanted to take German. We don't have enough German teachers, and I can't project that. And I would need to come and say, we need to hire another German teacher. So I think I'm using the best information I have right now. We also do have, and this is not a popular option, though I have talked to this individual in the music department before, we do have, we do have two, at least two, underscheduled music teachers right now. And we've left that alone because we know that there is a lot of work that goes into that. But if you're thinking about having two full-time music teachers right now at the high school, two full-time music teachers at the seven, eight building, and two full-time music teachers at the sixth grade center, there's some incongruence there, right? So there is some room for one of those teachers to pick up some stringed instruments, and that individual is okay with that.
Specifically with the strings, though, we have, like you said, we have a full-time band teacher at the high school, a full-time band teacher at the middle school, a full-time band teacher at the sixth grade center, and a full-time musical, instrumental music teacher at the elementary school level.
There is combined one teacher in each building, but it's kind of like a half a person, because half of the day, it's a general music person.
But you're talking about a strings program where one teacher eventually would have to service all three, K through twelve?
That's what she said, that's what she just said.
Yeah. I think that in 2023, when it gets to the high school, we would have to add another staff member, which is why I put that in there. And I think that if we, if we really did see a great increase in the number of students who wanted to participate, or if we end up deciding, this models that you should have eight students in front of you at a time, which is, in talking and consulting with both people in the industry and other districts, is a reasonable number for sectionals, then we would be able to do that. If we want to bring it more in line with what we're currently doing instrumental music, which is two or three students at a time, then we would need much more staff. But I think that the real question is, how many students will we have in five years? And then will that drive this? And the best I can do is predict based on what our enrollment will be, and fifteen percent of students, which is about how many, the percentage of students we have in music, and use that as modeling. You know, that's, that's kind of the best way I can predict it.
Anybody sign up?
We do. We actually have had, I've gotten a number of calls myself, and at last check with Zezwitz, who's our partner where we're having students rent their instruments, from, and I only checked after the first back-to-school night, in fairness, I've not gotten an update. So after the first back-to-school night, we had four parents rent instruments, which is, which is a good number, considering that's one building and one night of a presentation without a physical teacher here, I think.
In your curriculum cycle, as it goes down.
Yep.
So year one, so we're in year one, it would be you, science, art, music, correct?
Yes.
So in year two, you, does that affect, I mean, do you like sort of budget that line?
Yeah.
So you, you know, year one, you may spend, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred, three hundred, does it like incrementally go up?
So we really, we really try to only purchase in year three. The end of year two, to the, so you made the vote to approve the purchase of the RILA curriculum at the end of their year two, and now they're in year three. What I had mentioned, though, is that for some of these groups that are in the far right of the year one column, so that's groups that have had to wait a very long time to have their chance at being in year one, those groups I have budgeted smaller amounts in year one for immediate things that come up. Because what's happened is, we have these groups, and they're saying. that come up. Because what's happened is, we have these groups, and they're saying, "Great, we've done all this work, and we've identified that what we have isn't working, and you're telling us that we have to wait two years to fix it?" So it's the same with music. At this first meeting, and this happened September 19th, so this is the first opportunity I have to come to the board since that meeting, the teacher said, "We cannot move forward without new tubas." They felt very strongly that they could not wait for the curriculum cycle. They needed tubas. They were having problems with Levy, with kids taking tubas on the bus. And so not in our curriculum cycle, I have on the, on the agenda tonight to try to address that problem now. Next year, they may say, and they already have said, because they've given me their projections of the instruments that they need, you know, "We really need new baritone sax, and we really need, you know, some other larger instruments, euphonium. We really need, you know, whatever it may be that's expensive and large." And so my attempt is to try to use the funds that I have with what's been allocated, not, not raising anything, not asking for any additional money, to kind of say, you know, "This year I can buy you two tubas," even though it's not in the curriculum cycle. But if you, if you're telling me you can't have a functional band without the tubas, I can't, I can't in good conscience say, "Well, let's just wait two years. Don't have anybody play the tuba for two years." Or tell the parents they have to buy two. Like that just doesn't make sense. So that came up on the 19th, and here we are on the 27th, and it, you know, I'm trying to work through some of those things. But ideally, we're not making any purchases until year three.
What about lease programs? I'm sorry, Keith, but my, my daughter played clarinet up through 11th grade, so we have an awesome music program here. I am so in favor of, you know, supporting anything and adding new things. But my family could afford to purchase a nice instrument for her. What about leasing options for the school, and also your idea of increasing diversity? I mean, how do you?
So, yeah. So the modeling that I used for orchestra is what I would like to do with the instrumental music teachers. I worked through this with our new hire before presenting it. I've not done it yet with the instrumental music teachers, but to talk about what we offer in terms of scholarship instruments. Our district does provide things that a lot of other districts don't. We do buy reeds for kids, when a lot of districts would say that's a family's responsibility. Or we do, you know, try to, to purchase things that in other places aren't really part of the district responsibility. And I don't know that I'm necessarily aiming to stop all of that, because if it's, if it's part of what's happening. But I'm, what I'm trying to do is centralize it a little bit more so that it's not that, let me back away from music for a second. When we were meeting with the art teachers at the elementary school, and we were talking about their funding, they looked at each other and realized for the first time that different building principals allocated different amounts of money to art. First time they knew it. They were like, "You get how much a year for art supplies? Because I get this much." And that makes me uncomfortable, that we have that level of inequity. It's not, I don't even know that the principals know how much they spend. It's not anybody doing this maliciously or through any fault. It's just continuing with how things have been without a system in place. So I am confident that through every curricular area that you see on there, that the work that we are doing is, is, is going to benefit the greatest number of students, K to 12, in those areas, with the budget that I've been given, with the staffing that I have available, with a long-term plan in mind. And if the way that we need to communicate that to you is different, then I'm happy to have that conversation. But in terms of what we're doing here and moving forward, hopefully at least some of your questions in terms of whether or not we have a plan, you can see it, and you can see that the dollar amount figure of $60,000 is, you know, over, yeah.
And I think in here lies the issue, and I think to Kalen's point about being a rubber stamp is exactly because of this. Not that this is bad, this is very good. But it's, if, if this is the adopted norm, then there are going to be cycles where there are people that come on that are rubber stamping because it's been approved previously.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so you're kind of like...
What's the point of?
You're just, you're sort of just riding the train at this point for this particular, and not that it's a bad, I think it's great, I think this is a great way to approach it. It's just, it feels, you know, tough to people, you know, who are approving the spending that, and again, I, I agree with you. The books were, I was, we were supportive of them. I wasn't, I was just using that as an example of something we were talking about, you know, being a big-ticket item, or, you know, I don't know why I was thinking, what was the math curriculum? How much was that? It was like exorbitant amounts, $600,000. And that was, you know, a big spend. And so those are the kind of things that, you know, you get a new group of people when it weren't here for the initial year one or year two discussion. And here it is, year three, and we have a bill lying in front of us for $600,000. And we're like, "Wait a minute, why are we doing this?" It makes our approval just a rubber stamp at that point. So it does become a little bit of a...
So as, as individuals, as individuals, that's the case, and I guess the hope is that as an entity, it's not. So as an entity, we've gone through the appropriate approval processes, but as individuals who weren't here for those original approvals, then that, you're right.
Would it be fair to say that maybe we put something like this in new policy?
Well, what I was going to say, I, I think yes. It seems like we're doing everything backwards. I, I don't, I don't understand why we do it that way. But not, aside from all that we've discussed, if we want a program to be successful, and I've researched this quite a bit, I feel like there, there was an opportunity for us to perhaps plan this better in a way where people, especially our, you know, music department, felt comfortable that we were going to go into it. Because I think everyone wants this, is not opposed to a programs like this. They, they want to feel comfortable that's going to, long-term, it's going to have a good plan. And everything I've read said, "See what the community thinks about it." You know, "Get your staff's input. Talk to your board members. Get their approval." And none of that was done. And we're surprised that there's so much resistance? That's laughable. Of course there will be. So just from a, from a smooth sailing perspective and effective perspective, I think that things need to be done in a way where people feel more so that they're involved in the planning process. You get a heads up, especially in cases where you've had discussions, this is tense, people are not necessarily agreeing with that. That's something I think that, that warrants more discussion. So just in reflection, maybe, hopefully we can do better at that. But last question on the, the instruments, before I forget. So just so I'm understanding correctly, so we are planning to spend the $216,000 over the next three years in addition to the $80,000?
So, well, let me address that first, then I'm going to ask if I can respond to your previous point, if that's okay. Okay. So that is what the teachers have requested, not what I'm saying that we need to buy. I just wanted to be upfront with you that if, if you're speaking directly about being concerned about what this is going to cost us, it's, it's much greater what, what we already have is going to cost us to maintain.
Because why wouldn't we address that first before we?
Because I, because I, in my plan, I'm addressing it all at the same time. I, I can cover all, well, not all that cost, because I don't think we need all the instruments that they've listed. But I just asked them for what they wanted, not, you know, you get your wish list, and maybe we don't pick everything off of the wish list, is my current intent. But...
Wouldn't we bring up our stuff, our stuff up to date now before we introduce any new?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Just over the last, oh, my first year, before we got brought Lisa on board, as I shared with the board in an email, in my second, third week on the job, I met with Frank and Jonathan, and what ensued after that, knowing that the high school, starting with the top, and working their way down and using a bump plan of used instruments going from the high school down to the middle school, middle school down to the elementary school. The first two years we spent, Mr. Shock made sure my numbers are right, about $265,000.
Very close.
Went right to the high school. Went right to the high school buying brand-new instruments and $265,000.
And when was that?
That was 14, 15. You know, instruments, I, I think at the most recent garage sale, I just sold my trumpet, my wife, should I say, my wife sold my trumpet that my parents bought for me when I was in fourth grade in 1964. And it still works. It needed to have some little more saliva in it and all that kind of stuff. But instruments last a very long time. So, and we, and we have a, an excellent communications. When we say, "Hey, what do you want?" They, they're quickly to provide that, that list. And as, as we were going through the, the renovation process, had FFNE and money, I earmarked some for them besides the furniture and all the other things. They got, their, their once and needs met from, and as I shared with you before, from that very first meeting, we had a lot of dialogue. In there also, we adjusted and bought for the music, for the choral music department, a, a shell and risers that were very, their, their choice. They sent the purchase order, and I made sure they got it. So that's another $37,000. Another, they, they wanted to make sure the renovation, you know, one of our change orders for the high school was to make the high school stage dance-capable before their, for the varsity singers and for the musicals. And that was a change order of about $35,000. They, Joe Santinello asked for storage areas, and Quimpo asked for storage areas, and they also asked for a new concession stand. The new concession stand, we combined that with the visitors' locker room. That was $300,000. So we have about three-quarters of a million dollars of purchases for, the choral music department's very small, because they're, they're mostly sheet music and voices. Several hundred thousand dollars for the band, and, and a large, I don't know what the size for Quimpo, buying probably 25, or I guess it's about $15,000 for a, a piece, I guess that was a Strayer. They, for Quimpo, we bought him a, a half a 18-wheeler flatbed, if you look at the, at the alumni field. Those white, those white containers are on the side, besides being places, we put them on inside the stadium, one so little, little kids can't run around. You have less space to run around. And, and I mean, that was, there was a method of our madness, is to buy these nice white containers so they could store things on the field, and then they have the brand-new concession stand. So there's been a tremendous investment, and this is before we even got our cycle going. Now we have a system. A lot of people, and I know out there in, in emails and out there in Facebook and things, people talk about not having systems. We have a great system. We have a strong financial system. We're working within those constraints and fully not working, and my, my thinking outside the board's intent, as you want us to stay, be fiscally responsible. As you know, we're down 30 teachers over the last five years, four and a half years, that we're doing the, the right thing for all, for all people, and all, and especially being student-centric. We're giving them more choices. So if we need to refine our, through, through a retreat process or something like that, having a conversation about what you want to know, man, I'm all, I'm all for it.
It's not just that. It's also, I think, gathering consensus, consensus with community, with our teachers. Ideally, this, I feel, we could have planned it out this year, and then maybe rolled it out next year. That's just my feedback, my, my, and the feedback I've heard from a lot of people.
Thank you, ma'am.
So just to summarize and quickly respond to your, to your point, we did give opportunity for student survey, parent survey, and teacher surveys in May of last year, prior to entering the first-year cycle, to get that feedback, for which we use to base our decisions. In, in our experience from doing this, the teacher survey is usually pretty well completed by the majority of teachers. I would say that there's always maybe a very small portion that don't fill it out, like one or so, that don't fill out that teacher survey to give us information. In the music department, I received six out of 11. So I can only go on the information that I have for people who provide the information to me when asked. And I think that, to your point about wanting to build consensus, when I am directly told by a member of the music department that they will not support a program because it will damage theirs, even if it will benefit students, that is not in line with what I believe my charge to be. And so while I am all for getting support from the members of our, our teaching staff, of course, I want to have their support. When it's not in line with what I think best practice is, then it, then it becomes difficult.
But I don't think the majority of this, last meeting, we, it was like one out of 11. It was something pathetic. I don't know.
Well, that's one out of two responses I received. So part of the, the part of this that's a struggle for me in terms of how this comes out is that there is some misinformation that we have to address in terms of, I think it was brought up by a speaker at the last meeting, that people had asked for the interviews to be changed, and I was not responsive. You're, you're welcome to look. I received no such emails asking me to change those dates. So part of this is, part of this is trying to get to the root of what is the concern of the group, and how can we move forward. And yes, this year, having free instruments is going to be very helpful for us. But that doesn't mean I didn't have to think about what's going to happen next year when they're not free. I still have to think about it. And we have two community partners right now who are planning to defray the costs, but I didn't include that in this because I'm still working on them to help me defray the cost of the other instruments, you know?
And for the record, I, I don't have a dog in a fight regarding the band. I don't have a string person or a band person. I was looking at it simply from a financial standpoint. Because once I heard about it, I thought, well, the long-term ramifications of not planning this out may affect the board in the future. And they may be sitting here discussing cutting a program that may end up costing them $500,000. And it was really well-planned out, and it was a good thing for the community. But they just can't, we just can't financially keep spending money. And so that was my only issue that I raised and continue to raise. I think it's, it's better understood today that it's not a substantial increase. And to know that it's already sort of budgeted for out of your line item, if you will, kind of helps us a little bit. And to understand that whole background of the, of the, of the curriculum plan or cycle, which I know you have briefly touched on. This is the first time I can remember seeing this particular graph. Maybe you showed it to me before, I don't know. But that was also very helpful in understanding sort of what the, the strategy is for the future. So I appreciate that. Thank you much.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of confidence in your planning abilities and your, what you do. I mean, you do a good job at it. I think, though, telling teachers in August, "We're not doing this," and then totally being blindsided, it's just not a good practice. We got to stay away from that. We got to plan well. We got to convince people we're planning well. Have the conversations, not to beat a dead horse. I think we can move on now.
Okay. So thank you for the feedback. And just to put into the public, we are going to take care of all of the members of the music department through the curriculum cycle. So the, the truth is out there that they will get instruments, even though, because that's a question, is now that we're doing this, will they not get their instruments?
Did we buy one at a garage sale?
Not true. Brand-new instruments, not used, owned instruments.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
That completes.
Oh, my gosh. Sir, next month, they'll be shorter.
It'll be great tonight, I guess, right? Usually says we get out by surgery.
Okay, moving on to the student representative report.
It's still here.
Yeah. I, I certainly hope you don't have a lot of homework to do tonight.
I got a lot of it done before I got here.
Okay, great.
Lot of it done before I got here, yeah.
I'd like to introduce Andrew. I'm going to try to pronounce your last name correctly, Labib.
Labib, yeah.
Thank you.
So before I give the report, I just want to like talk about myself. I mean, it's been long and whatever. So I'm part of the graduating class of 2019, and just like a lot of my class members, we're all, we just got the college application process talk in our English classes like last week, so we all did that. And we're all on our applications. I sent my applications out. Eight schools, a couple I hear back in December, my early action schools, and then a couple I hear back, normal, regular decision in March.
Who are you hoping?
I'm hoping Penn. But that's a dream school. We often dream. So, yeah, that was that. And then I, at school, my schedule this year, I'm part of the medical care pathways program, which was after like interviews and testing, we, there were 12 of us selected to participate with the St. Luke's program. So basically, we went to like, one day they give us a lecture, and the other day we get to like rotate and like observe a department of the hospital. So yesterday, on Wednesdays, we do our rotations. I got to watch a bilateral hernia repair. They made me get in the, made me get in scrubs and get in gloves and just go stand in the corner and watch. And like they talk to you and they involve you, so that was really cool. And then I also take the two bucks classes, the intro sociology, which is this semester, and next semester it's interpersonal communication. And those are fun, I guess. And I have three APs, and then... And I have three APs and then, um, my anatomy course at the high school. Um, I also work part time at the local Burger King, so I'm usually drive through or front. If you guys want to stop by, say hi. So, um, now for the report, I guess. Um, so last Friday's football game, Dr. Kennedy said it was the biggest student section he's ever seen, and there was a tailgate before at Quakertown Elementary, so that was nice to see some school spirit from everyone come out, all grades. Um, this Friday, we play with Sahiken, and the Spirit Bus signups are posted on the Twitter and there are signs around the building all about that stuff. And then we have like two volunteer events that the high schools like in involves with. The first one is that on October fifth at Delaware Valley University for an organization called Feed My Starving Children, where high school students form an assembly line and then they pack food, which gets shipped out to families in need and children who are hungry. And that's a big event. The the cap is like one hundred fifteen students being sent over. Uh, it's during the school day, I think. I'm not sure of the time. Um, and this Saturday, St. Luke's is also holding an event, and if you're there, you'll see some of the medical care pathway students volunteering there and then also NHS members. And, um, speaking of NHS, November eighteenth, two P M., it's a Sunday, they'll be inducting their new members. And then, I guess, lastly, will be the rehearsals for, um, this, uh, this year's show of arsenic and old lice have started, and there are two separate casts. Um, so rehearse, uh, the shows are November fifteenth and sixteenth, and each night is a different cast, but the same show, which is that's pretty cool. And, yeah, today was back to school night, so, uh, a lot of the parents went to meet our teachers. And my dad went to meet mine, so that was that. And that concludes my student report.
Well done, Andrew. Um, so you you witnessed a bilateral hernia repair.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
And and you didn't pass out at all, right?
Ah, it was good. It was pretty cool. But I didn't I didn't know it was bilateral at first, so I'm just standing there. Because she made me put my name on the and I had to go to the bathroom very like really bad when I walked in. So he closes up the one side and I start to walk out. He goes, all right, other side. I was like, oh. And like, I can't leave because, I mean, I kind of want to stay and watch. It's cool. So I just, another thirty minutes went by. And then I used the bathroom after that.
I'll bet you were doing a dance.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the report, sir. All right, moving on to our standing committee reports. First up is the policy committee.
Do you want to tell me he can he can go if he needs to?
Oh, yeah, certainly. If you need to leave, feel free. You won't insult us.
Thank you.
Yeah. Exactly.
Do you want to run a piece?
Don't run.
We should let them go first.
Can you like?
We should let them go first.
You work at Burger King, right? Like, can can you like bring back some food for us? Just kidding.
Did that record it, so I can't say anything?
Just kidding.
Pass my gobstopper's over.
I'm good, thank you.
Andrew, my daughter just texted me, Morgan Small, and she said hello. Good luck.
I'll text. Thank you, then. I'm going to leave.
Thank you. Okay, policy committee, Ms. Weed, you're up.
Um, we met this evening and considered, um, two policies. Um, the first is the policy on criminal backgrounds and volunteering if you have a conviction for a felony or a misdemeanor. And I know how enthralling this is for everybody. Apparently, um, looking at this, the school district has a stricter policy than the state law does. Uh, we do not allow anyone with a criminal conviction, regardless of how many years have passed since that conviction, uh, to be a volunteer that is not supervised or with someone from the school. So it was decided, um, that we would look at what other districts do and also decided to take a survey of the PTO group opinions to see how parents feel about if we changed the policy to comply more with the state law, which per statute, uh, is five years for a misdemeanor. In other words, you're convicted of a misdemeanor, five years pass and you're forgiven and it doesn't matter anymore, and ten years for a felony. So, um, that was the first thing we discussed. And the next was, uh, we had gotten some, um, questions about our, um, TB tuberculosis testing, um, policy, uh, which requires, I guess, TB testing, um, in order to be a volunteer in the in the schools. Um, and, um, our wonderful attorney over there, Attorney Jeff, uh, decided and looked at this, that the state law, um, you are, we basically, the policy is is that it's only required if it's, uh, you're volunteering more than ten hours, is the long and short of it, and that is in compliance, um, with, um, the the state laws, I understand. Is that correct? Okay.
Is that ten hours? Is that ten hours at one volunteer event or ten hours in a calendar year?
A calendar school year.
Ten hours total.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
This is not if you come into school with your child and have a Halloween choir or something. This is a volunteer who's not supervised and is actually conducting the event or a cha- a chaperone, so.
So most people wouldn't fall under that category.
That's correct.
If I go on like one field trip a year, then I don't need a TB test.
You do not. Well, that's this is going to be changed, though, isn't it? We told everybody needs it, and now we're reversing that or?
No.
Yeah?
I think we're clarifying it. I'm not sure we ever said, did we say everyone needed one?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay. Well, then, we are changing that. Um, we are changing it that it is only required if it's more than ten hours per calendar year. So that policy is being changed.
Are we changing? Are we going to vote to change? I don't know how this works. Um, then about also about the clearances with?
The clearances, we are going to, um, in investigate. We're doing some more research on that, um, to see if, um, we should keep kind of our stricter policy we have now versus complying more with the state statute.
Yeah. I mean, I definitely like, uh, the the rule that you gave, five years, ten years. I think violent crimes obviously fall under a different category, but otherwise, I I like the less stringent, I guess.
Right.
Like if you had a misdemeanor fifty, I mean, years ago, like, that's anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Weed. Moving on to the finance committee, Mr. McCucci.
Yes, I'll be brief on mine, only because we had a rather large, uh, a rather long, I should say, um, presentation tonight by, uh, forecast, five demo. And, um, essentially, what, uh, this system does is it allows us or affords us the opportunity to look at all our financial data, uh, in one particular area and then compare ourselves with every dist- every other district in the state that's in this database, which I believe is every school. Any school that publicly reports their?
Yeah, any school that is required by a lot of report their data to the state, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and one of the challenges that we face from a financial standpoint is is looking at the finances sort of in real time here, uh, because of the way that the system works. Um, and I think that this system really affords us the opportunity to be more transparent, to put more information out there, um, regarding our revenues and our expenditures. Um, and it affords our district leaders the opportunity to sort of drill in where they need to. Um, and and, you know, we're we're constantly asking questions of them, uh, from a financial standpoint. I think that this will just afford us the opportunity. So, um, the Zach and his team are going to go back and look at, uh, this a little bit more in depth. I'm not sure when it will come to us for a vote. Um, but I I know that the the folks that were in the room were from the board were pretty excited about this. Um, so more to come on that, right? But I don't know when it, when does it come? We don't vote on this tonight, right?
No, no.
All right, this was just an introduction. All right, awesome. Uh, so moving right along, we also had a brief presentation on the review investment model plan. And, uh, we we reviewed a nice document here that was put together by our team, looking at our term investments, um, and our approach to, uh, what we do with the money, uh, month over month that we have in, um, and investments that we we project that will make, uh, some cash on over the course of the next eight, eight or nine months. So, uh, that was that was a a great presentation. We didn't go through all the rest of our agenda items on here. Zach, is there anything else that I missed that you wanted to to touch on?
No, we did run short on time. The only other thing was we reviewed the budget calendar, what the board can expect to see over the next couple of months from from the administration and and what the administration's doing over the next couple of months to build the budget.
And I think most of us were there except for, so if you want to see it, it's on board docs. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCucci. Uh, we move on to the facilities committee, Ms. Mitchell.
We actually, um, there's nothing new to report, I guess, from my last report.
That was the shortest report of the night. Thank you.
Welcome.
Next is the education curriculum committee, Mr. Anderson.
We did not meet either, so I don't have a report.
Ah, okay. Challenging for the short title, are you? Okay. Next is the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, number twenty-two, Mr. Jackson.
The IU met last Tuesday. I've put on, uh, board docs for everybody to see the board digest, which is a summary of everything that's approved, and the awesome news, which simply highlights some of the great things that are happening down at the IU. Feel free to peruse at your leisure.
While you're at it, Mr. Jackson, how about that legislative report?
Legislative report? The legislation's not doing anything because they're all back here campaigning to get our votes in November, so, uh, pretty much, I have included the legislative report we get from the IU every month. Take a look at some of the pending legislation. Nothing is earth shattering in there.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Upper Bucks County Technical School report, Mr. Akmanowits.
I will try and make my report slightly shorter than Dr. Harner's.
I've said three words tonight, sir. I did really well.
Uh, we had an executive session prior to our meeting, uh, last Thursday. Uh, brief announcement that Upper Bucks County Technical School is in the process of talking with Fox News. We're supposed to be featured in a new sho- show called Classroom, starting in October. Details to follow. Mr. Sweda reported the first day of school was a great success. Everybody all around had a great first day. Various vending machines have been featured with health options. Uh, they're leased to the school at no cost, and the vendor is sharing, uh, income from those vending machines of healthy products with the school. Uh, we're now completely stabled up with seven goats and four pigs, in case you wondered. Uh, the student of the month, and it's a member of our Quakertown community named Joshua Landenberg. He's in, uh, the tech school's mechatronics department. We discussed enrollment numbers and reviewed the class sizes. Uh, one takeaway primarily was that forty-three point six percent of the student population of the Upper Bucks County Technical School is from Quakertown as ascending district. Policy committee met at six. Uh, we discussed several policies that need to be updated to current standards. Uh, we'll be publicly reviewing and reading the policies next month in October, if, uh, you're intrigued. Um, we're happy to say we're considering two possible new classes for next year. Uh, we're exploring the possibility of offering an HVAC certification program and the possibility of offering a biosciences program. We're proud to announce that we recently entered in recently entered into agreement with Dulles Town Hospital. Uh, it'll introduce students to real world, hands-on clinical partnership. Uh, students are going to be working at the hospital in various roles and gain real world experience. Details to follow. Uh, November, uh, we'll have a student representation attending the Skills USA Professional Development Conference at the Camelback in Poconos. Saturday, December fir- first, we will be having a fundraiser at the tech school, which is going to, uh, feature breakfast with, uh, uh, the joyous round man, uh, of the holiday classification. Uh, the next J O C meeting will be at Upper Bucks County Technical School on October eighteenth at seven o'clock in Percasie. Uh, and there's just a reminder that the tech school has a restaurant and bakery that functions on location. I it's available in limited capacity, and I've made both a menu and a schedule available for both the bakery and the restaurant, available right at the table up front. You can grab one on your way out. My report is concluded.
Okay, you have another hour and twenty minutes to go to catch up. But, uh, thank you for your report, Mr. Akmanowits.
My pleasure.
By the way, to the audience, I forgot one announcement. This meeting is being recorded by the secretary. My apologies. Okay, moving on to the, uh, public comment section for the fiscal items being presented for a vote tonight. Please state your name and area of residence.
Chris Spear, Milford Tauschik. I was at four pages. I'll cut one out and keep it at three. No, actually, I I'm going to just sort of bullet point this. Um, so with all this discussion of the strings program and everything, and I do agree that I think it someday, this would be something that would be really good for our district. I do believe now in this climate, when we're closing schools.
Before you get too far into it, Mr. President, remind you that this public comment is on the fiscal agenda items. Just point of order.
It's sort of, I'm tying it into the musical instrument thing there. That's why I waited for this one. So, um, I'll I'll go back in time a little bit to November twelfth, two thousand fifteen. There was a board, um, there was, uh, a curriculum item brought to this school board for to approve Mandarin language. Now, again, I believe that since that falls under the language arts and it's just a subset of that, the board did have to approve that. So I believe, again, with this string section, this falls under the musical instruments, but it should be something that's voted on by the board as a new curriculum item. Now, I don't know if the solicitor has a a good, hard definition of what should be voted on, but it is the the board's responsibility as the elected voice of the community to express our voice and to to vote on things like new curriculums. In fact, new curriculum is one of the things that's clearly defined in your charter of what you're supposed to do. So, back in November two thousand fifteen, Mandarin was a was, uh, was brought to the board and it was voted on on December third. It was seconded by Dwight Anderson, who's here. Ron Jackson even brought up at that meeting if the district is being stretched too thin and whether or not they should approve Mandarin. And I don't know why he doesn't share some of these same discussions now because we're in such a financial time that we have to close schools and we're we're in rough shape and stuff, but we keep adding more things. And yes, it doesn't seem like it's going to cost a lot, but it's all these little things that are then going to pile up. And, you know, sixty thousand dollars over three years doesn't seem like a lot, but you just have to, you're you're about to vote on approving eighty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars worth of instruments right now. You know, in three, four years, you're going to need eighty thousand dollars worth of strings instruments if you get the kind of demand that the band has on it. And that the other thing that brings that to it is, have any of you been into the band room in school? In the high school or the middle school? There's absolutely no room to store any instruments. No matter how many more cabinets you build, you can't put basses in there, you can't put cellos in there. You know, not to mention the fact that, you know, when are they going to practice? If the if the band director's holding, um, uh, sectionals most of the day in that room, where where where's the string section? Are you going to build a new wing onto the high school? You know? I I just want to make sure that if we do this, it's done right and it's done when the district can fully afford it, you know, and fully afford to do it right. So I I just looked at a couple. I'm skipping all this. I'm going all the way to the bottom of my list now. Right? So I I've been to the fir- the last four football games or the four football games that have been here, and I I kind of looked at at the bands and and how all that played out there. So the most, the closest example to us is CB East. Now, they're a little more affluent than we are, but CB East has sixteen hundred twenty-three students to our sixteen twenty-five high school, and this is from U S news reports, so it may not be the correct number, but it should be relative, right? So CB East is just about exactly the same size of ours. Their band has sixty members to our band's over one hundred members. Their orchestra has eighty members, more than their band. The reason that their band is small is because there's an orchestra, and that orchestra is taking people away from the band. So as, yes, we're providing the students something else that they can possibly do, some more choice, we will be hurting the band. And I know you don't want to hear that, but it is going to happen. You know, this this great and powerful band that we have, you know, that blows people out of the stands when the football team scores a touchdown, will be like what Shelton Hams was at the last game. You know, weak and not very loud, not very big. We won't be winning all these competitions. They won't be going to Giants Stadium for Nationals.
Mr. Spears, please, please wrap up. Mr. Spears, please, please wrap up.
Okay. I'm gonna wrap up right now.
Mr. Spear, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm not plural.
Yes.
So, um, you know what? That's it. That's all I really need to say. But, you know, I just, I did want to bring up, though, that the other schools, and I have a whole list of them here, the schools that have orchestras, besides North Penn, but North Penn has over three thousand students in their high school, their band program is half the size of ours. And that is what's gonna happen here, and I don't want to see that happen here. And I would like the solicitor to, if he could, explain to me what a new curriculum item is, and if this falls under a new curriculum, it should be voted on and not blown over, if he could.
Okay, can this be done afterwards? Okay, thank you. Mr. Garten, feel free to-
I will have a dialogue with Mr. Spear.
Thank you.
Matt I C. has abandoned the Phillies because he's wearing an Eagles jersey.
My Eagles hat got wet, or my Phillies hat got wet. I had the Eagles game, so I had to buy an Eagles hat to the stadium.
Any other public comment on the fiscal consent agenda? Okay, moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. The business services dep- oh. The business services department is requesting approval of the five-year title, One Equitable Non-Public Services Agreement between Quakertown Community School District and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, effective July first, two thousand eighteen. Next is, the business services department is requesting approval for authorization to solicit requests for proposals or utilize a cooperative purchasing network for a musical instrument purchase-slash-service program. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have Mr. Akmanowicz, and seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Public comment on human resource items being presented for a vote tonight. Okay, no public comment. We'll move on to the human resources consent agenda. First is professional staff, next is unit pay, next is support staff. Do I have a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Mr. Jackson. Discussion.
Didn't we just approve a bunch of these? Is he, are these different, or are they changed?
There was other sports.
There, there others. Yeah, all right.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is public comment on policies and program items being presented for a vote. With no public comment, we will move on to policy and programs consent agenda. Okay, thank you. First is the PSBA slate of candidates for two thousand nineteen, and we discussed this at our last meeting. Uh, all of these candidates are running unopposed. There is a list of them in board docs, and we need to either approve the vote or not. It's our board doing it as one, so to speak.
What if we don't approve it?
Yeah.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
Next is approved tuition agreement with Palisade-
We have to vote to this separately because I'm-
We do?
What, we do?
Yeah, I had to sign into another system to vote. So can we vote for the PSBA candidates first?
Okay, um, do I have a motion to-
Motion, separate.
Remove it, right? You have to remove that from the-
You have to pull it, yeah. Have to pull it from the consent agenda. Are you sure this needs to be voted on separately? Only-
I just have, I just, I have to pull it. It's not a vote here. It's a vote on their PSBA website.
Oh, 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 I, okay. I see what you're saying.
It's not a, so I just need to go down, and I promise to make this really fast, since there's only one candidate for things to be agreed. They want to one candidate.
Is it a roll call vote? So you gotta get each-
Do we in roll call vote?
It does not have to be a roll call vote, according to PSBA.
Okay.
So, I'll just read the candidate's name, um, and all, I guess, you can do all in favor. I'll read each candidate if you wanna-
Oh, I, I, if you want, go ahead.
Um, for president-elect Eric Wolfgang, all in favor?
We're gonna vote on the slate together, aren't we?
Well, I have to put a checkmarks in each box. Go as we go down.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimous, unanimously for Eric Wolfgang.
For vice president, Art Levinowitz.
All, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous.
Uh, for Eastern at Large, Mara Burry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Uh, for the Section Eight Advisor, Amy Goldman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Uh, PSBA member, uh, trust, I should say, PSBA, PSBA insurance trust trustees. Uh, you may select one for seat one, which is Richard Freericks. He's running unopposed. Yes?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seat two, William LaCoff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, finally, last vote, seat three, Nathan Mains.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That's recorded.
Said it.
They're gonna send you an email.
Campbell won't like that.
Hey, we're good. Thank you. See, it was painful vote, probably the fastest one.
Okay. Moving on on the rest of the policy and programs consent agenda, less the PSBA slate of candidates. Approved tuition agreement with Palisades School District as presented in board docs. Next is approve agreement with the Pathway School for student number two-three-oh-five-two as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor of the policy and programs consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, information items, there really aren't any. Communication item, there isn't any, any new board business.
I don't, I, we can leave it for another meeting, 'cause it's late, but I just wanted to, we've been talking about this one month, once a month, meeting, and at first I was thinking that wasn't a good idea, but then someone mentioned maybe we have longer committee meetings. Anybody have, you guys wanna talk about that now, or later?
I think it comes up in December, when we set the, when did we set the-
Yeah, and I thought we, we-
We can talk about it at the retreat, maybe.
We act- we actually discussed this at one of the prior meetings, and we said since, you know, the December reorganization meeting and all that stuff, that we would discuss it before then, so.
For the record, I think it's a bad idea.
I'm open-minded, just saying. At first I was like, no, but, anyway.
Okay. All right, this brings us to our last public comment, and I know we have one individual that signed up for this public comment specifically.
Mr. Zabo.
Eric Zabo, Milford Township. Hi, thanks for having me. Uh, I'll be as quick as I can. Um, first, I wanna, I wanna let you know that I am very encouraged by some of the news today. I'm, I'm very thankful to see a thoughtful report as to what some of the plans are, right? I mean, and, and it's a very good report. Um, we're excited about the possibility of new instruments. I mean, you know, it's, I don't, I don't wanna come up and only complain, right? Um, so, thank you. Um, I do wanna encourage the board to just do a little research. Um, there, there was some very helpful information shared on board docs, um, with budget history and music staffing. Um, and I'm looking at that particular sheet now. Um, Nancy Anne and I got into a discussion at the end of the last meeting about, uh, the budget status and, and how, how this administration has been funding the music program. And these numbers on the sheet are very accurate, uh, and it has gone up, and, and that's awesome, and we really appreciate that under this administration. But the staffing numbers start at two thousand seven, and the budget numbers don't start till two thousand twelve. And if you go back to two thousand seven and look at the budget, you'll see this massive, you know, they cut the music budget down to zero, basically. It was at like almost a hundred thousand. They cut it down to almost zero, right? And then it's kinda slowly been working its way up. And so, s- the, the music staff feels like they still are short of what we, of what they need to, to operate fully. Um, so that's kinda where some of that, uh, dissension might come from, from a budget standpoint. So, I would just encourage you to look back a little further in, in that budget details. I also wanted to call out on here, it, it shows the enrollment in the stu- in the school and music staffing, and the enrollment dropped two hundred and sixty-six people since two thousand seven, um, which is five percent of the total enrollment. And the music staffing dropped thirty-three percent. Uh, they're still doing all the same programming, right? All this offering, all the same opportunities to kids, you know? The, the, the music enrollment hasn't declined at all, not even five percent. And so they've grown a program while enrollment's declined, and they're doing it with thirty-three percent less staff. It, it's, it's puzzling to hear that administration still thinks that they're, uh, that they have free time, right, and they're underutilized. Um, the, you know, so I, I just wanted to put that out there. Um, also, um, I think here's what's, you had said, we need to get to the bottom of, of why they're so scared about the string program. Um, on, on this plan, the first page of the orchestra six-year plan, it talks about expected program enrollment, and it's, cites a fifteen percent, uh, enrollment of eligible students. Currently, the, there are three hundred and sixty-nine music students in the, of, out of the two thousand and sixty-one elementary school total enrollment, which is seventeen percent involved in the music program right now. And so if the expected enrollment is fifteen percent, that's like ninety-six percent of the seventeen percent that's currently enrolled in our existing program. And so if this were to actually happen, I mean, that would pretty much decimate and eliminate, you know, that, that would kill the current music program as it stands.
Because they change instruments? I, I don't understand. I don't mean to take your time.
Uh, so, although it's a, although it's still instrumental music, it's, it's a very different experience and a different curriculum, and, and it's, it, it, basically what you'd be doing is providing a different experience, a, a different option to experience music, but not necessarily a better one or a worse one. Um, but you would, in essence, break something that we built for twenty years and is really, really good, one of the very best in the states, and you would trade it for however long it takes to rebuild a program from nothing, right, a string program. They're, they're, they're just entirely different animals, right? I mean, it's kind of like sign language versus a foreign language. They're both languages, but they're very different.
I'm just trying to understand how you think it's gonna decimate the current program.
Well, if seventeen percent of students are enrolled in band now, and, and the, the expected program enrollment is fifteen percent, it's not gonna be an extra fifteen percent, right? There's only so many, there's only so many percentage of kids-
Dr. Hoffman, would you care to comment?
Sure. So, based on, um, based on our modeling and the information that I have, and also, in a way, sort of supported by what, what Mr. Spear said, it, it would be in addition. So you're looking at having, um, an estimated fifteen or seventeen percent of students in band. We're not guessing that the majority of those students would choose a different instrument. Some of them may. Um, what we're anticipating is that students who are not currently engaged in instrumental music will now choose to be, um, with a different instrument. And I think that, that hearing something that says that, you know, you have eighty students or whatever that are interested in stringed instruments, like, we would want to offer that to them. So our, this modeling does not, uh, assume that these fifteen percent all came from another instrument.
So, the, the music department's concern is that there's, there's only a, a certain percentage of kids that are going to do music, right? Um, and so, especially if you offer strings in third grade, and they get used to that, by the time fourth grade rolls around, i- it seems logical to me that, that there's gonna be a big dilution of the people that were choosing band are now gonna choose orchestra.
Mr. Zabo, I mean, you know me, I mean-
I know you, Ron.
I've got siblings in the band leadership. I've got nephews and daughter in the band program, the choir program.
Yes.
So, band and the music program is very important to me. Um, two things to what you spoke about, the, the money aspect, and you were speaking about a time long ago when the budget was such and such, and now it's building back up to that number. But you did leave out two of the things Dr. Harner spoke about earlier, the band shell, and there was something else you, you mentioned, but one thing he did not mention was the new field in the back. That was a serious angst to the community in general, but the two programs that hugely benefit for that are band and the sports teams. So, um, when I hear people saying, "We're not thinking enough about the band's budget," I find it a little offensive, only because we've done a lot to provide for the needs of the band.
And I don't, I don't disagree that you've done a lot.
And, and the other thing is, what we're talking about right now is the issue about starting another program that will affect the band.
Yes.
And I understand what you mean.
And choir.
Right, but my, my, my concern, I should say, my concern, what I look at it as is simply the ability of this school district to provide another curriculum, another program for our children, okay? If that has an effect on the band, then it has an effect on the band. I mean, you mentioned, I mean, Mr. Spear spoke about and said there was, well, there was this band that's this size, or this band is this size. They're not nearly as good as Quakertown's, which is true, and we wanna hold that. And, you know, I wouldn't be sad to see, uh, the band diminished if that's the case, but at the same time, if the, the students are choosing to take those classes and to be in the strings, the orchestra versus the marching band, I, that's what they're thinking. That's what they wanna do. And I, I mean, you as the quimpo, of all things, should be behind both of them.
I, I, I am behind both of them.
Right, so, I mean, I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I find it, how can you not support both?
So, well, to, to answer your question, up, up until now, I hadn't seen a plan of, you know, and, and when all the music teachers that I talked to haven't been involved and don't know what's going on, I mean, it's, it's hard to get behind that, right?
It sounds to me like it's, like, we, we are legit worried because of, uh, the unknown, right? Does it decimate something that has worked perfectly? And I, when I think about it, I think about what's our, what's the core value? What's the mission? What is the, you know, what's the principle? What's the guiding light? And, uh, and do you disrupt that, something that's been really good? And, you know, you, you never know, right? You said in five years from now, that could blossom to be phenomenal.
Well, although we never know, there are lots of schools around us that have experienced a diminished program when they started a string program.
And so I think, I think that's really the focus. If you're gonna spend money, do you focus on one area? Do you focus on multiple areas? Do you give kids the opportunity to do, you know, I think that's really the discussion.
And, and just one more point, and then I'll be done. Um, I, I didn't have a lot of time to look at it, 'cause it was published a few hours before this meeting, but I did notice that some of the numbers on costs, like, I noticed you budgeted for one cello at five hundred dollars. Um, I'm not sure how much research you did into instrument costs. Most cellos are, are much more expensive than five hundred dollars.
So, these numbers came directly from our community partner, and this is the price that they're offering me, and I do have all that documentation behind it. And the reason why I have not published that information is because we have to wait for the bid to go out for instrumental music to be able to see if we can get similar prices for that as a part of this. It may or may not be through the same company, um, but I can assure you that all of the information on this is documented with, uh, an actual invoice for price.
So, so I, I quickly Googled, "How much does a cello cost?" Right? And, and the first thing that popped up, which was perfect, 'cause you listed five hundred dollars, it says, "First-time buyers are shocked to find that an, an inexpensive-" it says, "First-time buyers are shocked to find that an inexpensive beginner's cello will cost about $1,000, not to mention the bow." Right? It's possible to purchase a toy cello for half that price, but they're stamped out of plywood, improperly glued, and slipping, and have slipping tuning pegs. And so, I, I just, I want to encourage you to make sure that, that you've looked at those numbers carefully, and, and those are instruments that, that would breed success at that price. Yeah, sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Zabo. Please state your name and area of residence, please.
Andrew Wanger, I'm rich in township. I'm actually at TRUM, Ms. Weed, I just wanted some clarification on the TB test.
Oh, sure.
We have a huge event at TRUM next week that we really need 50 volunteers for, and so we've had a lot of drawback. Appgarden tells you that you have to get your TB test and upload the TB test, it's on the website. Is that going to change tonight? Are we going to try to change those things? We have a huge event by next Friday.
We're not, we're not voting on it tonight, so nothing is going to change tonight, so.
So what's on the website that they have to have their TB tests to volunteer next Friday?
Correct.
Wasn't that a 10-hour thing, though?
We haven't changed the policy, the policy's.
Why don't we vote on that tonight? Is that part of it?
We can't, we can't change the policy without two readings, technically. I'm not sure if that's.
That's your policy, yes.
So we have to have.
Policies, anyway.
You have to change the policy. You have to send it out for public comment as a first read, and you vote on it. That's the reason why we have.
So our next meeting, we read it, and then we get to approve it? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. But you can tell people the policy is changing. Okay. Yeah. We're happy.
Mr. President.
Hang in there.
Can, can we make a, a ruling this evening, or a motion to overlook that policy?
We have to, we have to follow.
We don't follow our policies, anyway.
More than a policy, it's legal, isn't it?
It's like Robert's Rules of Law.
Mr. Klein. Mr. Klein.
What you're proposing to do at your next meeting is appropriate and legal. So, if you want, I don't want you to adopt the policy, but perhaps you might just send instructions to your administration that if folks don't get the TB test, don't make an issue out of it.
There you go.
Yeah. Mr. Klein. Mr. Klein. The specifics about the TB test are not contained in the policy, it's part of just the procedures, so we are going to be able to change those tomorrow. There is no board action required to change that.
There you go. So, it was worth staying all this time, wasn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ryan Wean, QCA president. I'm a saxophone player, but I'm not going to talk about band, or defend my teaching of success. I'm actually here to invite all of you, administration and board members, to a tailgate event that QCA and Quespa are going to, to host together, October 12th, in the sixth-grade center parking lot, from 4:30 to 6:30. And it's a first, first-ever event, and we're going to have Chartwells is going to cater the event, and we're going to have some long games, and it's a family event, actually, so we're inviting all of our members' families along, and I'd like to extend it to you as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wean, I'm sorry, where is that again? Where's it?
It's going to be in the sixth-grade center parking lot, 4:30 to 6:30.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on, dates for board members' calendars, we have, of course, tonight's date, but October 4th, Thursday, is the next facilities committee meeting at the Community Room A in the District Service Center. That starts at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, October 11th, there is an education curriculum meeting at 6:00 p.m., followed by the work session, regular voting meeting here at the District Service Center. Thursday, October 25th, at 5:45 is the next policy committee meeting, followed at 6 o'clock by the finance committee meeting, followed at 7 o'clock by the regular voting meeting. Okay. Next is the adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Oh, wait a minute, discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.